Eileen, you want to read your statement?
In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, October 5, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. Due to the COVID-19 virus and mandatory quarantines imposed under executive orders by Governor Philip D. Murphy, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purpose of board meetings. A supplemental notice was given in addition to the annual notice due to the transformation of this meeting into a remote virtual meeting. The supplemental notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through Zoom platform both by audio and/or video means. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. This supplemental notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall bulletin board, and Milburn Town Hall front door. Supplemental notice was also forwarded to the official newspapers, submitted to the township clerk, and published in the item on October 1, 2020.
All right, thank you. We have minutes.
I have to take the ball first. Mary McNabb?
Yeah.
Here. Craig Clutner?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Here.
Joyce Segal?
Here.
Wolfgang Futuris?
Here.
Kevin Wenzel?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jessica Glad?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here. We have a set of...
I didn't hear her call your name, Steve.
She did not call my name.
I'm sorry, Steve, I had you checked off, that's why. Steve Togar?
Here.
Sorry.
Okay, we have minutes of the meeting of August 3, 2020. Who's eligible to vote on these minutes?
Everyone.
Everyone.
I did have one minor...
Was everybody here on the third? I thought, just want to make sure.
Yeah, I have nine, I have everyone here.
Okay.
I had one minor correction on page four. Middle of the page, be corrected to read, "The property is a designated site in the Short Hills Park Historic District, and the proposed patio received approval from the HPC."
And the supposed patio, is that what you said?
The proposed patio.
Proposed patio. All right, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of August 3? If not, is there a motion to adopt them?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Craig, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes of August 3, 2020 are approved. Now, the memorialization...
It's not a memorialization, it is a motion to approve. Gail Price is in the waiting room. But she's telling me, she's telling me that she got bounced about 10 times. So my suggestion is, I see her associate Jennifer Berardo is also in the waiting room. My recommendation is that you bring Gail Price and Jennifer Berardo into the meeting as participants. So if for some reason we lose Gail Price, we at least have her associate Jennifer.
That's fine. They're both...
Did you see her name at all, Gail?
Yeah. Nicole brought her over.
Right, but I mean before this, that she said she... I didn't see her prior to that.
No, she sent me a text, I sent her a text message asking if she was having a problem. And that's when she said she got bounced 10 times.
Now, I believe I saw Scott...
Scott Loventhal is here as well.
And I believe he should come over as well?
Yes, he can come over as well.
Okay.
Excuse me, Joe?
Yes.
Regarding the application for 92 Milburn Avenue, I would like to move that I be allowed to listen to the tape and vote on this application.
Joe?
It's scheduled for a decision this evening, and we only have an extension of time through tomorrow. We've already carried it twice. There was a resolution available on the 20, I believe it was the 21st. Changes were made on the floor during the meeting. And the board chose not to approve it on the 21st because you wanted to actually see the changes in writing. I believe it's timely to vote on it this evening.
Steve, I don't know of any exception to the law that requires, that permits us to, you know, entertain a motion such as that that you suggested.
Okay, thank you.
We're still waiting for Gail and Jennifer there.
They're here. Gail doesn't have her video working, so I'm not sure if she's having a problem. Gail, can you at least enter your appearance? Maybe she is having a problem. Jennifer, could you unmute?
There's Jennifer.
There's Jennifer.
Jennifer Berardo of the firm Price, Neeshilman and D'Arminio, on behalf of the applicant from Gilbert Avenue.
I'll keep an eye on my cellphone. Hopefully, Gail will be able to get her video work, working, or at least, I see she's unmuted herself, so maybe we can at least get her... Gail, are you here? Something's obviously going on.
All right, I want to proceed. And Jennifer's here, just to clear up some confusion that may have occurred this afternoon.
Let me handle that, Joe.
Pardon me?
I can handle it because I sent the resolution to Jennifer as well as Gail Price earlier today.
Yes, but the language that you suggested was in the wrong place.
I know. Jennifer, I sent you a resolution this afternoon, I sent it to you, I sent it to Gail, and I sent it to Mary Pat. There was one more correction or one more change to the resolution today that I received from Chairman Steinberg. Did you see that email that I sent that?
Yes, to paragraph 61.
Right. Well, apparently, I put it at the end of paragraph 61, that phrase. I was supposed to put it at the end of the first sentence in paragraph 61, so...
After the word, words no significant...
It should read, it should read this. Paragraph 61, the first sentence should read, and it's lengthy, "The board also finds that although the proposed redevelopment project with its 270 residential units and 5,200 square feet of retail space proposed for construction on the Springfield Township portion of the tract will undoubtedly result in some traffic impacts to Milburn Township residents and the surrounding area, comma. The testimony and evidence presented demonstrates that the two access drive locations on the Milburn property will operate safely and efficiently with no significant traffic issues based upon the imposition of the conditions set forth below," and here's where that phrase gets added, "provided the conditions set forth below relating to use of the two access drives are scrupulously adhered to, period." And then, of course, at the end of the paragraph, where I added those measures to the last sentence, it would be removed. So it's in the same paragraph, I just had to move the location.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Sorry about that, that was my mistake today. I was in a rush, I guess I didn't read Mr. Steinberg's email clearly enough.
Maybe I didn't write it clearly, no.
I'm sure you did, but busy day today.
Thank you very much. I think that now we should have a discussion with respect to the entire resolution as drafted by Gail with that correction, that addition. And if there is no discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Apparently, there's no discussion. A motion, either to accept the resolution or deny it.
Motion to...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Wolfgang Futuris?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Joe, we can hear you.
Pardon me?
Did you, what was your vote?
I said yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's seven in favor. The resolution is approved.
None opposed, right. Okay, thank you all very much. And thank you, Gail, that was a Herculean task to do that resolution. Okay.
Jennifer and Gail, I will email the corrected version after the meeting to Eileen and to you, to both of you, and to Mary Pat.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for the board for all of your time and consideration for this application.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Okay, now, I have kind of an announcement to make. I find this, and I mentioned this to Mary McNabb yesterday, this is the first time that I can remember in the roughly 15 years that I've been on this board that we have three applicants before us tonight who have been before us previously. I don't think that's ever happened before. And what I would like to do, to just maybe speed things along a little bit, is go down to the bottom of page one of the agenda and take 17 Claremont Drive, Orges, Coca, first on the agenda. Is Mr. Coca available, or his...
Yes, one second.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, we cannot see you, though.
All right, how do we do this?
If you go to the bottom of your screen where it says "Video", say "Start Video."
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, hope everyone is doing well and safe.
Thank you. Now, do I understand that this matter was previously before the board?
Correct.
Is that correct?
We have to swear them in, Mr. Chairman.
Now, do you want to explain why you're back here?
Mr. Chairman, we have to swear them in first.
They have to be sworn in first.
Well, let's swear them in.
Could you raise your right hand, please? You can hear me, correct?
Yes.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you gotten the matter now pending?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And may we just have your name, please, each of you?
Sure, Florinda Coca.
Orges Coca.
I'm sorry, what is your first name?
Orges Coca.
Orges Coca, okay. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, now tell us, why are you back?
Sure, so, so we applied for a variance about two years ago in October, and we were approved. However, last year, we were planning last summer to do the work, and unfortunately, my husband's father fell ill while traveling overseas. He fell in a coma, and my husband had to travel overseas to take care of him in the hospital. Ultimately, he passed away, and so that basically shattered all our plans and everything for the whole year last year. We didn't realize that, we were unaware that the time had lapsed. We were dealing with so many family issues, with his mother back and all the, all the family stuff, so that we actually missed the deadline to start the work. So then, we have to go through the whole process again.
Just so that everybody, I just remind all the board members, when Gail Fraser prepares memorializing resolutions, there is always a paragraph in the resolution which says that the applicant must apply for building permit within 365 days of the granting of the variance.
Right.
Yeah, we missed that, unfortunately.
And you missed the deadline.
We missed the deadline, and we had so many issues to figure with his mother, sick, all these other things post death, that we definitely missed it.
If I understand this correctly, you applied for a variance for floor area ratio, is that correct?
Right.
Correct.
And the maximum permitted in the zone in which your house is located was 3.6%. And you applied for 3.7%, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yes, it's the same plan we applied by...
It's 39.7% floor area ratio is what they require.
Yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, there it is.
Yes.
And the extent of the variance was 3.7, I'm sorry.
Correct.
I misread it.
Right, right, sorry, we don't remember very well.
We have our architect here.
I wish, our architect should be also on a call zooming, but...
Yeah, she's...
That's okay. Now, this case was heard in 2018, is that correct?
Yes, I believe it was October 1, something like that.
The resolution was approved October 1.
Right. Are there any questions that board members have of these witnesses?
Let me ask you something. Are you not bringing over Margaret or somebody to...
Do you want me to bring her over?
Yeah, bring Margaret Peterson over, please.
I have a question.
Just hold one second. Let's get Margaret Peterson, who's the architect, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Let's get her in the meeting.
Ms. Peterson, could you start your video and unmute yourself?
Unmute, okay, I did that.
Right next to that should be...
Right next to that should be your video.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Peterson.
Yeah.
Your question, Mr. Togar?
Yeah. Does the applicant have a timeline currently for completion of the project?
Let's get, let's get this witness sworn.
Okay.
Great. Ms. Peterson, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so have you gotten the matter now pending?
Yes, I do.
Yes, okay. And your full name, please?
Margaret Peterson.
Thank you.
You qualified in the earlier meeting as an architect, did you not?
Yes, yes.
And you're like in good standing as of today.
Yes, I am.
All right, the question that was asked was, how long do you expect this project to take?
Well, we actually did complete construction drawings, so it's going to be up to the homeowners. The drawings are ready for permit, for construction permit. So it's really just going up to them to select a contractor. But we, you know, we finished everything, you know, I think they will be ready to submit the drawings for construction, for building permit.
Yeah, my question was to the applicant as to what their timeline is for completion. Have they contemplated one? Yeah, we want to start work next spring, obviously, you know? That's the plan, I have some contractors, I got in touch with last time. So I mean, in the winter, we can't do anything anyway, but we want to finish, we want to start and finish within a year.
Within next year, basically.
Hopefully. I mean, it's going to take six to nine months, we were told, for this type of job, so...
The answer is it's going to take six to nine months.
Thank you. Sure.
Any other questions of any of these witnesses?
Mr. and Mrs. Coca, you understand that if the board is inclined to grant you the same relief again, this resolution will include the same condition, that you meet the requirements of the land development ordinance, that you obtain a building permit within 365 days of the date the resolution of approval is published in the newspaper. You understand, do you understand that?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson, can you confirm that the proposed variance relief and the plans are identical to the plans and the variance relief that the board previously granted in October of 2018?
Yes.
Thank you. Nothing has changed in the conditions that would warrant the granting of variance relief, all of the conditions relating to the land and the property and the structure on the property all remain the same?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of any of these witnesses from board members? If not, is there a motion to grant the same relief?
Do we need to ask if there's anyone in the audience?
Yes, you have to open it to the...
Yes, that's right. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions of these witnesses?
There's Stefan, someone with their hand raised, it's Stephanie Morgan.
Okay.
Can we bring her in?
She is here. I think she had a question. Not remained...
Wait, I mean, Ms. Morgan, you have to unmute yourself if you have a question on this application.
No, I don't, I actually had my hand raised on the previous matter.
Well, the previous matter, there was no, there was, in the previous matter, the public hearing on that application was closed, and the board was already in the deliberation process.
Right.
I'm aware of the fact that you submitted a letter to the board secretary, and she, I directed her to place that in the file. But once the public hearing is closed on an application, the board would normally not accept the letter, and there would be no opportunity for additional testimony because the board had already closed deliberations on that matter.
I understand that. I actually, when, when Mr. Steinberg asked if there were any comments from the public, I had raised my hand, but apparently, something went awry. So you can, I hear you, I understand how it works, and it was passed anyway, so it's irrelevant. Somehow, my hand, I guess, was still out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see, I did not see that your hand was raised. And frankly, once it's, once the public hearing is closed and the board is in deliberation, we would not normally accept public comment anyway.
Understood.
Let's go back to the Coca matter.
Do you have any comments on this matter?
No, I don't.
Are there any comments on the Coca matter from anyone in the public?
There's 23 people in the public, so I got to scroll down because I can't even see all of their names.
Yeah, most of the names I see are, I recognize the names from upcoming applications and neighbors that I've spoken to.
Okay. It does not, Mr. Chairman, it does not appear there's anybody else that has any comment or question.
Is there a motion from someone in the board to grant the same relief to the Cocos that they had and, that they obtained in 2018?
I'll make motion.
Motion is made by Joyce Segal. Second?
Second.
By Jessica Glad.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Clutner?
Craig Clutner.
No, Craig, you're muted.
I'm muted.
I'll figure this out, yes.
Thank you.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and good luck on the project.
Oh, thank you so much.
Let's get it done this time.
Thank you so much for your consideration, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, the next matter on the agenda is 29 Meadowbrook Road. Ming Yu Kao and Ming Ying.
All right, give me one second to get them over here. Ming Yu, and I need Tom Beo.
Hello, can you see me?
Yeah, and we have Tom as well.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Evening.
Good evening.
Let's swear the witnesses, Mr. Fishman.
Mr. Beo, you're on mute, you have to, we have to hear your voice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you please, I think they're muted.
Yes.
Would you please raise your right hand? Yes, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you gotten the matter now pending?
Yes, I do.
I do.
Yes, may we have your name, please, each, you can put your hand down.
My name is Ming Yu Kao.
Ming Ying.
And this is Thomas Beo, architect for the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Beo, I'll direct the first. First of all, would you qualify yourself as an architect, please? Give us the benefit of your education and experience.
Sure. So I'm a five-year graduate of New York Institute of Technology, 1987. I remain licensed in good standing with the New Jersey Board of Architects and have been so since 1991. I'm still alive. Those are the three qualifications, I suppose.
Any questions from board members on qualifications of Mr. Beo? All right, Mr. Beo, let's start, if I might, with a question from you, for you. On the application form, question 19 asked, was there any appeal in the past with respect to this matter? And the answer was given, yes. Were you involved at that time?
No, I may have misanswered that. We've never appealed the decision of the board. I thought the question was, was the appeal a request to go before the Board of Adjustment in the first place? And the answer to that is, yeah.
The question was, was an application made to this board? Were you involved at the time?
Yes. Oh, I thought you meant, were you rephrasing it? Has there been a previous...
And can you tell us the nature of the application that was made at that time?
I can, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. So we did appear at the August 2019 zoning board of adjustment. At that appearance, we had come up forward with an application which required four variances from the zoning board of adjustment. In that evening, one was eliminated, two of the variances were granted, and one of the variances, floor area ratio, was denied. We come back before you tonight with a substantially smaller project that actually has a smaller request for floor area ratio variance. So it's that one variance that was the most critical to my clients that we are coming back before this board for. The prior application had sought variance relief of 41 point... Let me get that number. One second, I have that, I should have been prepared for that. All right. Okay, well, it had sought variance relief for 305 square feet over the 36% allowed. I believe it worked out to 41.6. During the meeting, we actually toned it down, had some back and forth, and had whittled it to 40%. We were denied that evening, the 40% translated to a variance relief of 248 square feet. And tonight, we are before you for variance relief of 144 square feet. So we progressively whittled down the request for floor area ratio variance. And in so doing, we've actually brought the application in from the rear yard five feet, which translates to a substantial amount from the prior application. This new application actually will not make use of the rear yard setback variance that was granted at the prior hearing, and also substantially reduces the rear yard unoccupied variance, which was granted. at the prior hearing and also substantially reduces the rear yard unoccupied variance, which was granted at the last approval.
And do I understand that you're now asking for 38.3%, where 36% is the maximum required?
That's correct, and that translates to variance relief of 144 square feet.
Has any portion of the project?
I'm a little confused by that because I thought on your plans, it said that you were seeking variance relief for, to result in 2,381 square feet and that the existing was 1,846. So I thought that meant 532 square feet as opposed to the 300 square feet shown on the plan.
Well, the 144 is over the 36% allowed.
Pardon?
The 144 square feet is the translation of the number of square feet over what is allowed.
Okay. But what you're adding is not 144 square feet.
No, the total addition, both conforming and non-conforming, would be 2,381 minus 1,846, or 535 square feet.
Perfect, thank you.
Has any portion of this project been constructed?
No, no portion has been constructed. And I, maybe the applicants could speak to this, but they really came back before the board because a decision was made in the springtime that the house is very, very tight. It became an impromptu classroom, it became impromptu home offices, and my clients really need this additional square footage. They've whittled down as much as they could possibly do on this house to bring it down to the 38.3% request. And we appealed to the board to, I guess the word is mercy, to grant us this additional square footage.
Can I just ask, what is the date of, when did they get their approval?
The resolution date was enumerated the 16th of September.
September 16, 2019.
Correct, and that was predicated on a board hearing of August 5, 2019.
Well, my question is if the resolution was dated September 16 and you haven't, you haven't applied for permits yet on this?
No.
I mean.
That's a problem.
That's a problem because now the old, the old resolution is, is expired.
Right. I actually, my clients brought that up to me in an earlier meeting. And I could, I had thought I'd saw an administrative order, a governor's administrative order, lengthening all approvals that were granted and had, would be expiring in a certain period of time, an extension of one year.
I'll let you handle that, Gail.
Yeah, not, you mean the COVID-19 Permit Extension Act?
Yes, that's the one.
It doesn't apply to any, it doesn't apply to any variances that would have expired.
Okay.
Prior or after the date.
Okay, fair enough. Then we have one additional request and that would be the extension. But we really don't need the extension of two variances. We just need the extension of one, which was the rear yard unoccupied. On August 2019, the variance was approved for 20.5%, whereas 25% was required for the rear yard unoccupied. The new application actually is 22.13%, whereas 25% required. So it's almost half of what was approved. That was the, the reduction in size we made reduced the request for the rear yard unoccupied variance.
Mr. Beo, you have, you have a major problem here. The application for anything other than floor area ratio cannot be heard by this board because it was not advertised.
It was not included in notice.
It was not in the notice.
So the expiration of the prior approval is not something that this board could extend. It would have to be re-noticed and we would have to come back before the board for a rear yard unoccupied.
That's correct.
Okay, I believe we can achieve satisfaction of that with a reduction in the patio size because one of the discussions I had with my clients was the patio size. So to, to get to a conformity of 25%, I think I could achieve that. So we'd like to proceed if that is possible.
Well, you say you think you can achieve that. That's not good enough. You have to tell us it can be achieved and you do not need that variance.
Yes, it is, it can be achieved. We can cut the patio without any problem. That's just additional 2% of the rear yard unoccupied.
Just so that we're absolutely clear, if in fact the board grants relief tonight, it will be relief for floor area ratio for 2.3% over the 36% that is maximum permitted in the ordinance. And that would be the only relief that would be granted tonight. And it's the only relief the applicants will have from the requirements of the Milburn zoning ordinances.
And Mr. Beo, if the board is inclined to grant that relief, it will be subject to a condition that you submit revised plans showing a conforming rear yard setback and rear yard unoccupied.
Yes, and it's worth noting, probably why it wasn't picked up. When Ms. Davit was doing her reviews, this goes back a few months. The applications were very, it's quite delayed and I get it. The letter of review was done in early summer when that expiration on the rear yard unoccupied had not yet been triggered. And we did make the September hearing because of a noticing issue with the Zoom ID information. So I'm confident that I could eliminate it with a slight downsized of the patio. So I, I'm okay proceeding, but I just wanted to bring up probably why that occurred.
All right, that's, unfortunately, that's not really relevant. So the, the application is limited to 2.3% variance over the 36% maximum floor area ratio. That's the only thing before the board tonight.
Okay.
And any prior application has expired, as I understand it. So the, for the construction will have to be limited to require this one variance and no other variance. Is that correct, Gail?
That's correct.
And so I would add.
Your clients understand that, do they?
My clients understand that, and I would add that that speaks to the substantial difference in applications from the prior. This one really just being whittled down to a 2.3% variance on floor area ratio. So.
I understand.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to direct my next question to the applicants themselves. Do you understand exactly what's going on here?
Yes, I understand that we, basically, we regrow through the application and the previous two approved variants expired, not valid anymore. So in order to go through this, we would like to be compliant to the rear yard setback and also the occupied area. So just make that too not necessary. So we are still applying for that additional 2.3% variance for the FAR.
And Mr. Beo understands that he will have to submit to Ms. Davit revised plans showing no variations from the Milburn zoning ordinances except one, the one that is before the board tonight for floor area ratio. With that understanding, is there anyone on the board who has any further questions for these witnesses?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have a question.
Yes.
On, Mr. Beo, on your zoning calculation form, page two, under floor area ratio, it appears to me that it says 29.7, and on attachment E, it says 30.1. Could you reconcile those two numbers?
Um, I'm going to ask you, Ms. McNabb, to just go back and repeat the question. On my attachment E, is it attachment E you pointed out? You said page two.
No, page two on the zoning calculation form.
Where is that, Mary?
Page two on the zoning calculation form.
Okay, I'm there.
Under floor. Yes.
Okay.
Page two, under floor area, floor area ratio, it says 29.7%.
Is existing.
On attachment E, it says 30.1.
So the correct answer is what's on my zoning calculation form and not on attachment E. Attachment E says 30.1. The existing home is 29.7.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Steve Toger?
So just to review, this is an oversized lot. It's oversized in proportion both width and depth. The house is not positioned in some unusual fashion. So please just review for us the hardship associated with this application that requires an FAR.
The hardship is really one of inability to make this home work for them. It's a personal matter that has a lot to do with the way we're functioning in society today. It is a one-car garaged house. They have an existing sun porch on the back of the house that's effectively being replaced with a building. The FAR variance comes into play when the second floor is placed over that screen porch. So we are, while we are expanding the home, and it's true, there's no land particular shape hardship other than rear yard setbacks that could be achieved. It's really the building up over a former structure that, that is, speaks to the, to the nature of variance, 144 square feet. And this house is one of the smallest on the block. When we moved in 10 years ago, we only had one six-year-old boy. And now we have a 16-year-old boy in high school now and a daughter of nine years old. And everybody work from home right now, and the three-bedroom and one bathroom and a half is really too small. That's why we think we still need to go through the variance and to make it bigger. I know, I understand that is 2.3%, but I think given the size of the house, it's relatively small, and even after this expansion is still, really, still a smaller house. So I hope the board can consider this hardship and grant approval. That would be very helpful. Thank you. I'll add one more thing. We did a little survey of the neighborhood and the data was presented to me, and I have it here. 21 Meadowbrook is 2,655 square feet. 29 Meadowbrook, the proposed house that we're seeking, is seeking to go to 2,381. I have nine more homes on Meadowbrook, I won't go through them, that all are between a low of 2,080 and a high of about 2,655 square feet. I would say that the home would be rendered consistent with changes that have occurred in the neighborhood. Perhaps it doesn't speak to land configuration issues, but it could speak to the inventory of the neighborhood and how this home could be brought up to that same caliber.
All right, well, let me jump in here because I want to remind everybody that what this applicant is looking for is a floor area ratio variance. And if you remember, on a floor area ratio variance, we're not looking at your C variance criteria. We're not looking for, you know, is there something relating to the property or the shape or its situation? We are, the key for the board is the applicant has to demonstrate that the site is going to accommodate the problems associated with the floor area ratio greater than that permitted by the ordinance. That's the special reason criteria for a floor area ratio variance. So we're not talking about hardship. If this is a D variance, it's a D4, it's FAR.
Thank you, Gail.
Okay.
Any other questions of this witness, these witnesses, any of them? Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions of these witnesses?
I don't see any hands.
Yeah, I don't see any hands. I don't see any people in the chat.
All right, the floor area ratio requires, how many votes, Gail?
Five affirmative votes.
Is there a motion in this case?
Or discussion.
Or discussion.
I remember this, yeah, I remember this one from last year. I remember hearing this and thinking the same thing that I'm thinking now. Is that, you know, visiting the site, looking at the designs, it's awfully big. I remember very much the second floor before was an issue and in my mind, it's still an issue.
An issue in the sense that?
It's very big and the, and the new roof line is going to be above the current one.
Any other comments from board members? Is there a motion in this case?
In what a sense that, that how the plan is too big? Is there any criteria like the total footage, square footage that can be qualified as a too-big house? I, my understanding that this is overall coverage ratio is merely 2.3% higher than required. And the previous approved case, I think, is 79.3, right?
79.5.
79.5, yeah, 3.5%. And in my neighborhood, I think I can get a long list of
Over 40.
Houses have over 40% of FAR. I would wonder why this house got approved and what is the criteria? Because I, to be honest, I want to get approved in just for small variance. I would be very helpful, I feel it's very helpful if people can tell me that what exactly criteria there is that I have to, in order to, to get a variance approval. Some people did get a variance approval, apparently, in my neighborhood and on the Meadowbrook Road. I can list at least 10 of them, in very nearby area. So would the board tell me that if we have to go through this again, right? What would be the criteria that I have to meet?
Well, I think that, I don't think that it's the function of the board to tell an applicant what the criteria are, but I do want to say to Mr. Beo that just simply repeating to the board.
I think Joe froze.
Yep, he did.
Wow. Or what the square footage is, you know, floor area ratio would be in those cases. The floor area ratio functions off of the size of the lot. So I don't think any of that testimony meant anything to me, at least. But any other board members have any comments on this case? If not, is there a motion? I don't see a motion anywhere in the, on the board. If there is no motion to approve, the application will fail for want of a motion.
We're going to have to take some action. There has to be some action taken on this application.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve, motion to approve as presented.
Craig Plutner makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Mr. Plutner, that was to approve as presented, subject to a condition that the plans be revised?
Yes, as newly presented, let's put that one there.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Mary.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Plonner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve Togar? Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
I'll vote yes on this one.
The application is approved.
Thank you, board.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Revised plans now, Mr. Baio.
Yes, I will. They'll indicate the smaller patio. Thank you.
Okay, let's get back to the agenda. Which means that the next case is first up.
Okay, okay, so I need I need Richard Keller. I need Diana Gerstel. And I believe I need Karen Arant. Right now. So, everybody, Rich. Karen, I have the landscape architect, the Gerstels, and you.
All right, Eileen, I have a initial question, which I think I emailed to you this afternoon. I saw on the plans that the applicant intends to remove two existing trees.
Okay.
Do we have a report on this case from the township forester?
We don't get reports unless it's a cycling application. We don't get reports on residential.
Right, so assuming for a moment that these two variances are granted, would it be appropriate to make the condition that the township forester must approve to remove?
They'll have to get a treatment or permit.
They need the permit anyway, so.
Have to get a treatment or permit.
And all of our resolutions say it's subject to all other requirements, state, county, so.
Okay, who's going to present the case for the applicants?
Well, let's swear the people in first. Seems like there's going to be four people sworn in.
Four people are going to testify?
Possibly.
To be on the safe side, let's swear them all in.
Let's swear everybody in. Right hands up, everybody.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be gotten a man it up ending? That's okay. Thank you very much.
Who's going to begin?
I can begin. So thank you for hearing us tonight. We are looking to be able to put in a swimming pool. It's something that we've thought of previously trying to do in the 10 years that we've lived here with the COVID situation that made us think that now might be the right time to try to move forward and try to do that. My husband's an ER doctor, so we've been stuck at home a little bit more than maybe even the average person. In addition to the normal reasons for enjoying a pool, we have a daughter who was recently diagnosed with a condition that makes certain kinds of sports more risky. And swimming is actually one of the few kinds of exercise that are recommended for this condition. We love the uniqueness of the property. As I said, we've lived here for 10 years. It's an old house. It's a unique lot. And the uniqueness, while it's great, it sometimes results in some certain issues for us when we try to make an improvement or when we want to make an improvement. And that's the situation that we find ourselves in now.
Anyone else going to testify?
Well, any questions?
Any questions of this witness?
All right, so we were going to have, we have our architect, Karen Arant, and Richard Keller to testify.
Yeah, Joe, if there are no other questions for the Gerstels, I'll do a brief intro about the property, outline the variances. That Karen Arant will go over her design, and then I'll come back for a few simple planning proofs.
Okay, but before you do that, Mr. Keller, give us the benefit of your credentials, both as an engineer and a planner.
Certainly. I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey, licensed as an engineer in 1989 and as a planner in 1990. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with a declared concentration in Water Resources and Environmental Engineering, and that is from the Rutgers University. I also hold a Master's of Architecture with a concentration in Urban Planning and Design, and that is from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I was also an adjunct professor in both the graduate and undergraduate divisions for approximately 11 years. I've appeared before this board, the planning board, approximately 110 boards throughout the state of New Jersey. My licenses are in good effect.
Thank you. Your qualifications as both an architect, I'm sorry, an engineer and a planner are accepted by this board.
Thank you. What I'm going to do is first introduce an exhibit. It's my firm's survey, which is part of the application, but I'll label it Exhibit A1. If I can share the screen, I will do that now. This is a, the drawing is entitled Land Title and Partial Topographic Survey. It was prepared by our firm for the property at 18 Brooklake Drive. The, sorry about that, you're interfering with my thing right there. There we go. Sorry about that. Share screen. Okay, the drawing is dated 6/19/2020, and it's updated with color added for Board of Adjustment on 10/5/2020. And this drawing shows the property and its location. The property is on the westerly side of Brooklawn Drive. Brooklawn Drive is about a 700-foot-long private dead-end road that comes off of Farley Road near its intersection with Glen Avenue. Along that dead-end road, there are nine homes at front on Brooklawn. This is the, just past the Gerstel property, the last property on the left is the Linsers, and then there's a string of properties coming down the right side. Just below us to the south is the third house on the block, or the second house on the block, and that is the Axelrod House, the properties to the rear front on Old Short Hills Road. The property is located in the R4 residential zone. It has 40,110 square feet, so it's nearly an acre where 20,000 square feet is required. So it is an oversized lot within the R4 district. The property, and I'm going to spin this around just so it's consistent with the architect's drawing. We view it and I'll rotate this around. So it's consistent with the drawings that are part of your set. You'll see that the property is actually in two lots. It's Lot 21, which consists of Track 1 and Track 2. Brooklawn Drive has what's shown on the tax maps as being an access easement. It's referred to also as a right-of-way branch, so it's a branch off of Brooklawn Drive. It really functions as a private driveway off of the Brooklawn Drive. And so you have the easterly tract, the primary tract of Lot 21, and there's a pond on the property that primarily occupies Lot 22. Altogether, they comprise the subject property. You can see that the house is set considerably back from the right-of-way, both the Brooklawn right-of-way driveway, the right-of-way, as well as the access easement. The house is 122 feet back from 122 feet back from the primary right-of-way, and it's 45.8 feet back from the access easement that loops around onto Brooklawn, but really acts as more as the driveway. Because the house is placed so far back on the lot, the rear setback on the property is only 28 feet. What we've shown here is, in the green, is the existing dwelling. In the tan color with defined by the blue dash line, that is the area that is defined as rear yard by our ordinance. And we also show the minimum 12-foot setback for any accessory structures in the green line. And if we come out a little bit, you'll see that you also have the pond and the stream that traverse across the property. It comes onto us from the Linsor property, actually comes across Old Short Hills Road, through some back properties, through the Linsor property, through our property, underneath a culvert, underneath the driveway, and continues on down until it ultimately joins the east branch of the Railway River. Because of the stream, the house was placed very far back, leaving almost no rear yard. Obviously, well, in this case, the rear yard is 4,550 square feet. That's only 11% of the total lot area in the rear yard. Most standard lots have anywhere from 30% to 50% of the lot area in the rear yard. We only have about 11% that defines the rear yard. Milburn requires a 25% rear yard unoccupied. So if we have to have 25% of the total lot area behind the house with nothing in it to start, we're at 11%. So we have an existing non-conforming condition that we're starting with in terms of rear yard unoccupied. We also have an existing non-conforming condition because the accessory structures, which are located technically in a side yard, but they're existing, they get amortized over the same rear yard area, even though they're not in the rear yard. And we have an existing non-conforming condition as it relates to accessory coverage. With regard to, basically, that 20% of that 4,550 means we're only allowed to place 910 square feet anywhere on the lot, including in the side yard, where already have those accessory structures. So obviously, we need variance relief to add anything to the property and certainly amortize size pool. As part of the proposed development, the applicant proposes to lower the rear yard. And I'll let the architect talk about this. I'll just show you, briefly share A2, which is our site photos.
Rich, before you do that, what was the revision date on that survey exhibit?
It was today.
10/5.
10/5, correct. So I have, A2 is six site photos, Gerstel Residence at 8 Brooklawn Drive. All photos were taken by myself yesterday, October 4th, at about 1:30 in the afternoon. There are six photos. The first is from Brooklawn Drive, looking west from the street to the private road. This is that southerly right-of-way branch that loops around, that access easement. You can see the house as a Tudor style that sits down below. The stream comes under the driveway at this point, but the house is set well back and well obscured by existing vegetation and trees. Photograph number two is taken from that northerly right-of-way branch. That's my car parked there. There's a gate. It's part of a front yard fence that was part of the, an earlier Board of Adjustment application in 2001 to fence around the pond. There's a gate into that area, and you can see that, again, the area where the proposed pool is going is well back from the street, and it clips from the street by mature vegetation. Photograph number three, we've moved onto the property into that side yard. You can see the fencing on the right, which is for the pond, and that was part of the 2011 approval. You can see the primary connection to the outdoor from the existing house into the private spaces is off the side of the house. And accordingly, that's where the patios were placed. The kitchen area and the fire pit are all placed on the right side. Beyond that, you can see the swing set. The swing set will come out. You can see the ground rises up. The ground should be dropped down to be below this patio lever, a level that's consistent with the egress doors on the main house, so that not only is it fully conforming to the setbacks, but it snuggles itself down and hunkers down into the landscape, further limiting views from the neighbors. If we come, photograph number four is the proposed pool is to be set at the elevation of the lowest patio, which is in the foreground. So this patio will remain, and instead of taking a couple steps up, it'll take a couple steps down to the pool area, which will occupy a small portion of where the swing set is. This will all be lowered. There'll be a four-foot wall that will define that edge. On top of that wall, the landscape architect plans for supplemental hydrangea that will augment the existing 12- to 16-foot-high arborvitae in the background. If we come to the, if we come to the back of the house, looking towards the north, again, you'll see in the foreground, that is the level that this backyard is going to be lowered to. So in the foreground, it lowers about 2.5 feet up to the back wall, where it drops about 4 feet. The existing wall will be rebuilt in the form of a newer wall, but all the existing arborvitae will remain. They will not be affected in any way due to the work as we essentially grade out to a new retaining wall that drops that area. And finally, photograph number six is in the rear, looking south. You can see that most of the back of the house has no physical connection to the rear yard. There are windows. There's no doors. The only doors are really on the side, so it's the appropriate location. To place a pool is in the foreground, where it's a connection to the patio that exists and a connection into the house. If we look to the south, about 112 feet away from the proposed pool, the proposed pool will come to about midline between the windows right there. The proposed pool, from the pool to the adjacent property line to the south, will be about 112 feet. So that's the existing site conditions as it exists today. What I'd like to do is just, I guess I will go through just briefly the variances requested. And we have one little fly in the ointment. We do need a variance requested for maximum accessory coverage. I'm going to bring over the, I'm going to bring over the landscape architect's drawing now, and then she'll do most of the testimony on it, but I'll bring it over into chair of my screen. Again, at the rear of the property, the swimming pool, go over, there's a detail, general detail showing the pool location in the back. Pool comes to just shy of the midway point of the back addition. The existing landscaping will remain. I'll let the architect talk about this. But we do need a variance for rear yard unoccupied. Section 606.2E1G. That is where 25% of the total lot area is required. The existing is only 11%, and we're taking that down to 8% at 3,532. So there's only about 1,000 square foot decrease in the rear yard unoccupied, but it does take an existing non-conforming condition to make it worse. And then, secondly, the variance from section 609.1C, where we're only allowed 20% rear yard area in accessory coverage. The existing property is 29%. We're adding about 1,000 square feet, 1,100 square feet of accessory structure. That takes us up to 53%. I would point out that the total accessory coverage on this lot is less than 7%. When we look at corner lots, that's a metric for corner lots, and appropriate corner lots is 7%. And this is less than 7%. It's just because we have such a small backyard. I would also point out, however, that the, on our drawings, we did ask for, if you look at the blow-up on the architect's drawings, this is part of your documents, there's an existing metal fence that comes around. There's a gate, and it provides security from the pond for the small children to get into that area. That metal fence was anticipated to be, continue to be part of the pool fence application, of the pool fence, once the pool is constructed. There was a new pool enclosure fencing added on the drawing, which comes from the back of a retaining wall, drops down, it drops down at 68 feet, and runs behind a significant landscaped area and connects into the front corner of the house. This was on our drawings, but it was not picked up either in the letter of denial, and it was not noticed for. So our question is, we did include the clause in the application, in the publication, that the applicant may seek any other variances and waivers as the need may arise during the course of the hearing. I know the landscape architect assumed that we were covered on that when we had the 2011 approval for here, incorrectly so. So we want to amend the application, if the board deems we have the right to do so, to cover the new pool enclosure fencing, which was on our existing drawing. We're proposing to make it four-foot metal fencing to match the fencing that I showed you in the photographs. And it would start at the end of the wall, drop down about 68 feet and grade and run right to the house, and that would provide our final enclosure. If the board deems that we don't have the, they don't have the jurisdiction because of notice, we would seek to amend the application on the fly.
The board doesn't have jurisdiction.
Say the last sentence again.
I said, if the attorney, and she just did, deemed that the clause does not apply, and the board does not have jurisdiction to grant the front yard fence, we would remove that from the application, and we would agree to find a conforming location to complete that fence. So that would come off the application. I don't know exactly where it would be. It would be anywhere from the front right corner of the house to somewhere back by the existing patio. We would form an enclosing link to meet the pool code requirement and remove the new pool enclosure fencing from the application. the new pool enclosure fencing from the, from the application.
All right.
But do you want the board to understand what's happening? It wasn't noticed that even though it was shown on the plan, it was not noticed. It wasn't, and so the board has no jurisdiction to authorize the extension of the front yard fence. They'll either find a conforming location. If they're not able to do that, then they'll have to come back for another variance.
And my applicant, the applicant understands that. I went over that, that earlier today. So we would amend that accordingly and remove that from the, from the drawing set.
Perfect.
So I think what I'll do is I've gone over the variances. I'd like to let the landscape architect discuss her drawings and go over some of the detail. I know I've kind of, I've jumped the gun and, and told you a lot about, a lot about the great things she's done, but I think I'll let her go and then I'll come back quickly for the variance proofs.
Okay.
Unless, unless the board, I guess the board is, does the board want to ask me questions now or the public?
There's a question, there's a question from the audience. Michael Axelrod has his hand raised. I'm assuming it's a question for somebody.
Yes, I'll bring him over. Nicole already did.
Mr. Axelrod.
I can wait until the landscape architect speaks.
Okay.
Okay, I will share my screen with you.
Qualifications?
Oh, um, one second. I'm a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed for approximately ten years. I went to school, five years at SUNY College of Environmental Science and Forestry, graduated in nineteen eighty-five and, and my license is current and in good standing. So.
Proceed.
You ready for me to review the plan with you?
Proceed. Your qualifications as a landscape architect are accepted.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, does everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
So as you can see, let's zoom into this, the swimming pool area. Their existing patio, like Richard said, is right off the, it's right on the side yard. And we wanted to connect the swimming pool area with the existing patio so that, for safety reasons, so that when the adults are all hanging around the barbecue area and the children are swimming, it's a, it's a good connection. And the whole, the whole backyard was, will be lowered between two and four feet so that the swimming pool area will be on the same level as the walkout from the house. And then like Richard said, it'll be three steps down and the steps are right in here from the existing slate patio. The, the existing green giant arborvitae's, they are approximately fourteen feet high, will all be preserved. We will be putting the fence in front of the green giants. We're right kind of along the, you can see the fence line. They're on the Gristel side of the property in the rear so that we could preserve them to the greatest extent practical. We didn't, we, they, the green giants share both properties. So we're going to just put the pool enclosure fence in front on the Gristel side so that we don't disturb them at all. And then there will be a wall alongside the swimming pool that would, like I said previously, would be between, the wall will actually be four feet high on the swimming pool side and between two and four feet on the north side, south side of the property. The, the landscaping will be supplemented with hydrangeas that will grow five to six feet high, supplementing some of the green giant screening. We, it's really very private already, so there's no need to supplement, but just should something, you know, should they grow, outgrow anything, they'll, they'll, the hydrangeas will be there for additional screening. And we're also putting in a swimming pool spa, as you see. And, and then the rest of the yard will be all green, all the way to the, the north, the, sorry, to the north side property. And, and again, there, it's, it's very far from, from, from the north side property. So it is nestled into the existing landscape. And the, obviously, the reason the Gristels don't want their swimming pool to be seen by their neighbors and this is the best spot for, for the swimming pool. It will, it will be completely private. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but that's.
Are there any questions for the landscape architect?
Just to clarify for the record, the, the left side of the drawing is actually the south and the right side with the pool is, that's the north.
It's the north, correct.
So I will need you to remove your screen so I can see if there's.
Okay, sure. There you go.
All righty. Mr. Axelrod.
I think we had someone, well, first of all, are there any members of the board who have questions for this witness?
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know to whom the question would be addressed about noise and light.
Well, let's, let's have whoever can answer the question, ask your question and then. Is that, is that your question? Where, where, if any, will the lights be?
So there would be cool lights.
And you anticipate any noise escaping from this area?
We, we do meet the setback lines that the, the village, the city, the town, sorry, the township of twelve feet. So it's, it's the same as, it's allowed on a, a conforming property.
Mrs. McNabb, if I can, if I can answer that, one of the things is you'll see in the, in the photos we had shown on photograph number, photograph number five, you'll see there's an existing children's playset right in the area that is actually less than twelve feet off. It's, it sneaks into the twelve-foot setback. That would be replaced by the pool and the pool would be from that corner down about three, from where the swing set is being lowered by about three feet. And it will be ringed by retaining walls and enhanced landscape. So I think that there, there's no reason to believe that the pool would generate any more noise than the existing swing set. In fact, I think it will be quieter because the architect had the good sense to drop that down. So it, it, A, it even furthers the limited visibility. I don't think from, if you're standing where the, where the swing set is, you can't actually see the neighbor's property. And when you lower that another three to four feet, it really both hides it from the neighbors and I think it also protects it with sound on the side. So the sound will be generated more up and we're adding additional landscaping that will, again, capture the noise. So I think it'll certainly be no worse than having a swing set in the backyard. And I don't think there's any difference whether it be twelve feet off the line or fifteen feet off the line. I think the architect has taken good measures to help getting that sound and attenuate any sound that will come out of there. And the lights would, of course, meet the ordinance requirements. They're generally in, in, in the, in the water that we put the lights. And of course, the applicant has indicated that they would meet all zoning requirements. Given the dense landscaping, the four-foot wall and the proposed hydrangea on top, I can guarantee there'll be no visible light spilling onto any of the adjoining properties.
What about stereo?
You know, obviously, they need to meet also sound ordinances, whether, I don't think the applicant has any plans for an outdoor stereo, but you know, the kids do bring out portable devices and, you know, they're subject to all of the traditional sound requirements. Just this the same way as, you know, the neighbor behind us, thirty or forty feet back has a, maybe not thirty, forty. They've got a patio back there. They can have music on their patio, as can the neighbors to the south. So again, we have ordinances to protect that, but I think what's most important is we are meeting both the twelve-foot side and rear standards and we have significant existing and proposed buffering that is augmented by the land, by the elevation changes.
Eileen, can I ask some questions?
Any further questions, Mary?
Oh, sorry, I muted myself. No, thank you for your answer.
Eileen, can I ask some questions?
Any other questions from board members? Any other questions from anyone?
I have many questions. How should I address my questions?
Mr. Axelrod, identify, I don't know if you have questions for.
I have, I have questions for everybody on the Zoom call, so.
You mean for the witnesses, not everyone on the Zoom call?
Actually, yes, because there's, there's inaccuracies in the application. So have members of the board looked at the application for development and went to the property? Visited the property?
That's standard procedure, Mr. Axelrod.
Okay, so one thing, I've been listening to this presentation for close to thirty minutes. On number fifteen, and Mr. Keller, I don't know if you signed the application. The one that I'm looking at is blank and I have history with these, these people. So, you know, I wonder why the application wasn't signed, but I think I know why. There's a major inaccuracy. Their property sits fifteen to twenty feet above my property. And it says, and I'll, I'll quote, "Their property sits lower than all adjacent properties." That's factually incorrect. Their property is at least twenty feet higher than my property. There's major, major runoff. To put an application that says that you sit lower than all adjacent properties? How come we're not talking about that? When it rains.
Mr. Axelrod, you will have an opportunity to make a statement, but I need you right now to frame it in the form of a question.
Okay, what are you going, what, okay, here's the question. Why wasn't the application signed and notarized like every other application tonight?
This application was signed and notarized. I have the original in my file.
One that you sent me, Eileen, was blank.
Okay. Because I have the original.
All right, so was it, all right, then my question is this. Was it notarized saying that all adjacent properties are lower than their property?
All the notary does is notarize their signature.
So is it, you, you sent me a blank one with no signature?
I am telling you that I have the original. Typically, what happens is the original is signed and notarized.
In number, in number fifteen, does it, do they change what you sent me? Because my property is not lower than their property. Their property is not lower than my property.
All right, well, you'll have the opportunity to make that statement when the, when the time comes for you to make a statement. Right now, you are limited to questions of the witnesses.
All right, so what, what?
The Gristels and Ms. Aron.
Okay, so Mr. Keller, what are you going to do about the major runoff that will be significantly impacted by putting more in the land?
Wait, before, before that, can Mr. Keller please address whether or not the applicant's property is lower than all the surrounding properties? Let's, let's talk about that. Is that factual in the application, Mr. Keller? Actually, I did, I did not prepare the application. That is not factually correct. I don't know that it's fifteen to twenty feet above, but the, if I go back to my survey.
It's easily fifteen to twenty feet above.
Mr. Axelrod, you'll have to, please don't interrupt. You're getting, Mistress Togger is getting an answer to his question. You will have an opportunity to make a statement.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Keller.
Yeah, the, the pool is proposed to be up in this area at elevation two seventy. You can see the bottom of the wall in close proximity to Mr. Axelrod's property is two sixty-two. So the proposed elevation is about eight feet below, above the bottom of the wall at that point. The property does continue to drop into Mr. Axelrod's property and then it drops somewhat precipitously because he's got a, a large wall that drops in and it does continue to drop. So if you look at the far side of Mr. Axelrod's property, it certainly may be twenty feet. And that was factually incorrect on item number fifteen. It does not sit below all the properties. It sits below the properties that are in closest contiguous, both to the west, tax lot thirteen, and to the north. And as indicated, to the south, we've got more than a hundred, a hundred feet from the proposed improvements to the property line. This application will be required to, to prepare a grading plan. They won't get a building permit unless they can satisfy, demonstrate to the township engineers that any excess stormwater runoff has been managed appropriately. I've worked on, actually, Mr. Axelrod's property. I've worked on probably five or six other properties. I'm familiar with the, the hydraulics, the topography in this area. And I'm sure that we can devise a grading plan that would be protective as the ordinance requires of Mr. Axelrod's property in terms of drainage. Thank you.
Mr. Axelrod, you'll have an opportunity in a minute to make your closing statement. Are there any other questions from board members or from anyone in the audience of any of the witnesses or the applicant?
Joe, I need to briefly just touch on the planning proofs.
For me?
I just need to quickly go through the planning proofs.
Go ahead.
Okay, obviously, we think this is a C1 variance, is a hardship variance where the specific piece of property, the specific shape of the piece of property being much narrower with the rear of the property relative to the front. Keeping in mind that our ordinance requires twenty-five percent rear yard unoccupied. So anytime the backyard starts to get narrower in the front, it's a, it can create a hardship. Also, under a C1, where the location of the structure is lawfully existing on the property can create a hardship, we believe that that's the case here. The location of the existing dwelling at the rear of the property, which actually in and of itself is created by an exceptional physical condition, uniquely affecting this property in, in the terms of the presence and location of both the stream and pond. This results in a pre-existing, non-conforming, unoccupied rear yard setback. All of these issues result in exceptional practical difficulties or hardship upon the owner of the property when trying to reasonably develop that property within the ordinance requirements. The development on a point nine to almost an acre property of a fourteen by thirty foot, thirty-four foot pool, we think is reasonable. And again, as I indicated before, total accessory coverage is limited to six point oh three percent of lot area, which is on the low side. Recalling again, corner lots are restricted to seven percent accessory coverage and this board often hears that that's a hardship. There's also, I shall leave out the C2 component because that was the fence. With regard to the negative criteria, obviously, it's in two prongs. There's no, that there's, there's no negative impact on the, that's no substantial, excuse me, detriment to the public good and there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. We think that there is no detriment to the public good or master plan and certainly not substantial. The proposed pool is in the exact location that the zoning ordinance and master plan anticipate a pool should be. A minimum of twelve feet off the rear and side property lines in an area that is analogous to other neighbors' rear yards. The pool is appropriate, appropriately located. It's actually the Gristel's house that's really in the wrong location and for a number of good reasons. If the house were located seventy, eighty feet from the street, as it is in most of the neighborhood, this application with pool location and size would be completely conforming. The proposed improvements are all more than a hundred and ninety feet from the primary portion of Brook Lake Drive and a hundred and twenty-five feet from the twenty-foot access easement. The existing proposed site topography, the existing landscaping and the placement of the proposed pools and patios limit the visibility of these uses from Brook Lake Drive and the surrounding properties. I was at the property on Sunday. I had to go into the bushes and peek through to see into Mr. Axelrod's property to, to look at, to see the addition that was recently placed on the rear of that property with the same variances we're requesting. The, or at least a rear yard unoccupied anyways. The, the existing landscape is completely adequate to buffer the uses from the neighboring properties and that's before we're adding the proposed hydrangea. This is certainly not an over-intensification of the use. We think that this, what was new to me today is also that the pool certainly allows for a therapeutic use for the daughter, which is, can be supervised on site. Certainly advances one of the purposes of the land use ordinance by providing such a, a use on the property. We think there's no detriment to the master plan. The master plan goals and objectives on page forty-three of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen reexamination. Goal number one is to encourage appropriate land uses that promote the character of the township as a small suburb of the highest quality. I see nothing that cuts against that. This is an intimate little, small-scale incursion into the backyard. Objective one point oh one is to protect the character of established residential neighbors and. Objective 1.01 is to protect the character of established residential neighbors and encourage the use of land development at an appropriate scale and density. This is not a 20 by 40 foot pool. There's not a slide. There's not, um, a, a lot of accessory stuff. They scaled it down to make it appropriate to the rear yard. We think that the, in my professional opinion, this meets the, both the positive and the negative criteria in support of the variances under C1, and we ask that you approve it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any questions for any of these witnesses? Just questions now. Eileen, I.
I do not see any hands.
I don't either.
All right, now, this is the opportunity for anyone in the audience who has a comment to make, to make that comment. Mr. Axelrod.
I mean, my, my comment is this, anyone who's, who's come to this beautiful street, and it's, it's Brook Lawn, not Brook Lake. I don't know if Brook Lake's a different street. Brook Lawn Drive is probably the most beautiful street in town. The, the Gerstels have done very nice work with their pond. They have a beautiful pond. The, their property just does not call for a pool, and we will be negatively impacted by the runoff. And I think, and this is not name-calling, I just think this board, because many of you were on the board the last time they went for a variance. The fact that they did not put truthful accuracies on that application, this is the second time the Gerstels have done this, okay? You may or may not know this. They did not sign that because they were hoping that I would not be on this call tonight. When they went for a variance five or six years ago, as a friendly neighbor, I went up to them and said, hey, what are you guys doing with your house? Because I have better things to do than spend two hours in one of these meetings. And they said, we just want to bump out our garage by about six inches so we can park a car. I said, oh, that's great. Good luck. I, I hope you get it. Next thing I know, they're putting a three-story addition on their house. Three stories. They are, if you look at that property line, when they come home at night, they are so close to our property line, our Ring camera goes off every night because their, their headlights come into our home. There is massive runoff. I would suspect it's way more than 20 feet from where they're putting that pool down to our property line, and the runoff will be significant. So I feel for their daughter. If this is therapeutic, I, I hope that they get this pool, but this will be the second time we're negatively impacted, and I just think it's not the neighborly thing to do. I'm not going to say what I really want to say, but they were not honest in that application. And by putting something not honest and not signing it, I mean, I, I don't even know what to say. That is the second time. So I, I hope you all do what is right. I hope you visited that property, but that, that property does not call for a pool.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has a comment or a statement they would like to make at this time?
Can I make a comment in response?
Sure.
So I just want to say that I regret that Mr. Axelrod feels the way he does about, I think he has some sour grapes about a, a different variance that we got, that we were 100% truthful all the time. I think that he didn't participate in the variance process, and he was disappointed with the result, but he had his chance to speak up. And I don't think, we didn't do anything that, you know, that we weren't allowed to do. We went through the process. In addition, I do want to say that the last variance that was granted between the two of us was actually Mr. Axelrod, a year after we did our garage addition, and he was granted a variance from, I believe, I'm not sure exactly, but for lot coverage and for some rear yard accessory use, which is not, not very different than what we're asking for. And not only did we did, was he granted the variance, but we did not, you know, contest it. We, we didn't, you know, cause any difficulty. And he was granted that variance. That was in 2015. And our lot is, I mean, I don't, is significantly larger than his, and our backyard, even though it's very small, is also significantly larger than his. And so I think that his, more of his backyard is covered than ours, and so I don't feel that it's anything extraordinary to ask for. And in particular, since he's, since he's the only person who's participating in this process, he's the farthest neighbor away from, this is being put in the back corner away from his property, in a far, the farthest section of that back area of our lot.
Thank you. We're going to now open the matter up to board members who may have comments that would like to make. Anyone on the board?
I'll, I'll comment. Um, you know, the, the pool is going, as the applicant said, the, the pool's going in an area that's very far from, from any of the neighbors, you know, in, in the, in the corner that it's going. You know, it seemed to be very well landscaped. And then in terms of concerns about runoff, I, I think that they testified that you would have to, you know, they'd have to comply with all of the ordinances and everything that, that, you know, the, tanks and everything else that they would need to do to, you know, make sure that it's in compliance. So I just don't really see that being a problem, but I'd be curious to see what other board members think about it. I think it's a modest proposal.
I have just one comment, and that is if the board grants these variances, I think a condition should be fixed relating to the maintenance of the greenery that was testified to, and maintenance of the new plantings that are going to be put in as testified to. Beyond that, I agree with everything that Jessica said. I think there will be a requirement by the municipality and the municipal engineer to see to it that there is not excessive runoff to, to Mr. Axelrod's property, and I agree that this is as far away from his property as is, it's farther away from his property than from any other adjacent property owner. I don't see it as an issue. Board members, anyone else? And it seems to me, just I'll add this, that it's perfectly obvious from looking at the drawings and the surveys that this is a very peculiar lot. The house is set very far back on the property, very little rear yard, which makes it very easy, I think, for the board to grant the particular variances that are being sought. And I'm very pleased that no setback variances are being sought, meaning that this pool and the other improvements are being set further, farther away from the property line than the ordinance requires it to be. Anyway, that's my view of the application.
I'd like to add a statement. There, here's a, what are feature on that property that, um, that really precludes any kind of amenity? And it shrinks the size of the property from the acre that it is to something less able to be managed. So I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a, it's not an overly, it's, it's not something that's being overly asked for. It's in proportion to the land, and I think that I can support the application.
I just want to say one more thing. As you spend time on this board and drive around town, you see the results of the board's actions. And I went to this property this afternoon, and I was very pleased to see that black wrought iron fence that surrounds the pond. I know that that was a variance when that fence extended into the front yard. That was one of the variances that was granted, I think, back in 2000, I think, 2014, if I'm not mistaken. And I just said to someone the other day that every now and again, you, I remember, and this is kind of off the beaten path, but just because all of you on the board are volunteers, you don't get paid for doing this, but every now and again, something happens where you were very glad you were on the board. There is a property on the corner of, I think, Glenn Avenue and Wyoming. When you come over the bridge from Milburn Avenue, over the railroad bridge, there's a property on the right-hand side, on the far side. That property came before this board seeking a fence in the front yard. It was denied, and we told the homeowner, why don't you put up bushes? Because this is one of those properties that, when you come into Short Hills, Milburn, Short Hills, that's one of the first properties you see. And I just happened to pass it the other day when I went to see the case we're going to, I think, deal with next, tonight. And the bushes were put in, they look absolutely gorgeous, and you get a feeling, at least I had a feeling, that I helped improve the looks of this town by turning down that application for a fence in the front yard. In any event, I didn't mean to bore you with that little story, but in any event, I'm going to ask now if there, this is, these are C variances that are being sought here. A majority of the board, that is to say, four votes out of seven, will grant the variance. Are there any motions to be made in connection with these two variances that are being sought?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with the stipulation that we talked about in terms of maintaining the landscaping.
And also removing the fence from the front yard?
Yes.
There is second.
You already did. Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Frank Platter?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
No.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Congratulations. Good luck on the project.
Thank you.
Okay, the next matter on the agenda is 72 Myrtle. Any witnesses here on that case? Kate Carpenter and R. Mansfield are the applicants.
There's Carpenter. Who, who's the architect? Is it?
Daniel Damon.
It's Danny Dubinette.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Good evening.
Dan's on his way over.
Mr. Dubinette here?
Yes, he's on his way over, but it, it's for some reason. There we go. Just you two, Mr. Carpenter, Dan and you?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's swear the witness is in, Mr. Fishman.
Yeah, Roger, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I can guard the matter now, Penny?
Yes.
But, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and you got to unmute yourself.
Bottom left of the screen, Dan.
Yeah.
Does mute.
Good.
Who's going to testify first?
I guess I will, and Jordan, unless you have something you wanted to add or wait till I'm done and see if I didn't miss anything. Yeah, Danny, you could take it away. Okay. Thank you. So we are seeking for this application, one variance. It's for the front yard setback. Required is 40 feet. We're proposing 25 feet. This project is a new home, so we're planning on removing the existing home and building a new. It's on Myrtle. And the average front yard setbacks for the street is 24 feet, it's actually 24 feet, nine inches. So we felt that it was important to maintain the streetscape, not to avoid a variance and push the building back 15 feet, but rather maintain the 24-feet, 25-foot front yard setbacks for the continuity and the streetscape. So it's, it's good for our applicant, and it's good for the surrounding neighbors. So if I may, I'd like to share a screen, and I'll run you through our project. And again, there are no other variances associated with, with this application. I don't see anything. Do you?
No.
No. There you go.
No?
Yep. Well, your screen is up. You just have to find your.
Just have to find your file.
Okay, I had it, I had it open. Okay, so this is the, is a rendering that we did at the office. This is a 3D rendering of what the proposed home will look like.
So Dan, we have to mark that as a one, and tomorrow you're going to have to get copies of this to Eileen and to me.
Sure.
Is it, is it more than one page?
No, it's only one, this is only, well, the new exhibit, everything else you have in your package.
Okay.
So this is a rendering that we did of the proposed house. I was lucky enough to be able to have been the architect for the house to the left, 68 Myrtle. So we got an opportunity to design this house. So one of the things is, obviously, keeping with the scale and massing. Again, the only variance we need is to align it with the front yard, which I think is a positive for everybody. One of the things to note, which may or may not be interesting, but the existing home on the lot was much wider, wasn't as tall, of course, but again, was at 20, 25 feet off the property line, but violated both the left and right side yard setbacks under eight feet. From the right side, we 10 feet. And again, the adjacent neighbor, there's their driveway garage that's adjacent to our property, so we shouldn't be blocking. And the way the sun moves around the property, the way the sun moves around the property, that we won't block their light in their space as well. I just got to notice that, um, my audio quality is not good. Can you hear me okay?
You keep breaking up, but it keeps coming back, so.
Yeah, it says to, I have low resources, it says. So the short story is that we're 10 feet away from the side yard setback as opposed to eight. And again, the adjacent neighbor, it's a driveway and garage, and there's a significant distance between the two of these homes. There's 25 feet from, from these properties. So we're going to take an existing home that had three or four nonconformities and bring it to a home that has one nonconformity, and of course, And of course, present no negative effects as a result of this. And I think as a result of this application, making the decision to proceed with the variance was, again, going to be more positive than the negative of pushing it back 15 feet. I think that would feel like a missing tooth on a, on a nice streetscape. That's our application. And I quickly run you through the drawing set, so we can see what we're looking at. These are the plans of the house. Basement, first floor, second floor. And the shaded area shows you the.
We're not seeing that, Danny. We're still seeing.
Oh, boy. Okay. Let me stop share. Share screen. Okay.
There you go.
Did that work?
Yes.
Okay, so we see in the floor plans of the house, basement, first and second floor. And the shaded area is the area that's not conforming, so if we would, we would conform if we pushed it back 15 feet to get behind the front yard setback line. And like I said, the average front yard setback for the street is 24.9 feet, so we're at 25 feet. This is the, these are the elevations of the home. And like I said, all the other variances, building coverage, lot coverage are not needed, and FAR is not needed. This is the survey of the existing home on the, on the lot. And again, we're, had four non-conforming issues here. Sides, combined side yard and, and front. And this is our proposed. Which is coming. So the, this, this gray area here, the shaded area is our new footprint. And the dotted lines, which are hard to see through all this stuff, that's our, was our existing home. Now, one of the things that worked very well is we're able to take the front-facing single car garage and because of the elevation change, get it into the basement. And so we're able to create a narrower home, of course. Larger. That's our application. So I believe that the, no negative impact to the zone plan, but actually a positive that we're actually seeking this variance versus pushing it back 15 feet.
All right, I have two questions to lead off. The first is, you keep saying, and you said in your application that the all, I'm quoting now, all homes are average at 24.5 feet front setback. How many homes are we talking about?
A lot.
And where did you get those averages from?
We got it from an engineer. And I could share screen and share with you the file that we submitted that shows the average front yard setback. But it was done by Jim Mans, who's an engineer, who did the survey. And.
And how many houses?
A lot of homes. I'll pull that up for us. Give me a minute, I'm going to find it and then share screen. I don't know if I froze, my computer froze, but I'm coming. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to share my screen momentarily. Okay, so we have Myrtle Avenue. Can you see what I see?
Yes.
Okay, good. This is the subject property. So we got three homes till we get to the corner of Cypress. And one, two, three, four homes to the left.
Dan, we're going to have to mark that as A2.
Okay.
If you would email that to Eileen and to me tomorrow, that would be great.
We were talking about a total of how many?
Eight homes.
Including the property in question?
Including the property in question, the home existing home at 25 feet, yeah. So I think it would look like an anomaly if it was setback 15 feet versus.
But that's what the ordinance calls for, right?
The ordinance calls for 40 feet and has us calculate the average front. Yes. And actually, I had the opportunity to speak to, only one homeowner reached out to us, you know, we, we put it in a letter and asked if anybody had any questions. So 68 Myrtle was the only homeowner who contacted us and was happy to find out that we were maintaining the front yard setback and was, would be disappointed if it had to go backwards.
But we don't know who that is, and that's hearsay.
Right.
The other question I have is you say the existing home is that, I'm looking at number 12 on the application form. Is that 24 point nine?
24.9, yeah.
And you said we will be greater. What does that mean?
Well, we're going to be a little farther away from the street.
How much further?
Point the, point one. Yeah, you know, I see. It was easier to calculate what we're over, if I maintain 25 feet.
Yeah. Any other questions from board members? Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions of, of either of the two witnesses who were sworn? Eileen, anybody?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make with respect?
Wait, hold on, hold on.
Now you have somebody.
Mr. Arantes, I'll bring him over. Do you have a question? Oops.
A student or a comment, Mr.?
Yeah, just, hi, everyone. Just a comment. I am.
You're going to comment, you have to be sworn in.
We swear you first.
Us, your name and your address.
My name is Rizarentes. I'm the homeowner of 68 Myrtle.
Now, where is that house? Well, let's swear you in first.
Raise your right hand, sir, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so have you gotten the matter now pending?
Yes, I do.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Arantes, where is your house in relation to the subject property?
It's the immediate house to the right of the subjected.
To the right?
Yeah, correct.
Your comment is?
Now, I'd just like to support the application as, as the nation, the architect was kind enough to share the plans with me in advance. I was worried about this variance being an even further construction, but I think that if the idea is to be aligned to all the other option, all the other houses around. And as, as Mr. Dubinette have mentioned, it is true that when you look at the line, it's a beautiful line of eight houses in a row that align to these, to this front yard setback. And I think would be really strange to have something pushed even back. So I fully support this application of my to-be neighbor, and I, I just like to highlight that as, as Mr. Dubinette have mentioned. And I'm going to give my testimony here that I support this application as well.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have a comment he or she would like to make? All right, board members, any discussion? Well, let me tell the board where I come out on this. We have an ordinance in town that requires properties to be set back 40 feet from the street. If you look at the pro, the homeowner, the, I understand that the properties that are now there, the houses that are now there are not 40 feet back from the street. But there's a kind of a I'll call it a rule that in land use that when a house is demolished, as this house will clearly be, that's an opportunity to adhere to existing zoning. As a matter of fact, the applicant through Mr. Dubinette is telling us how wonderful it will be that the new house will meet the side yard setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. I don't see. I think that what we're saying, if we grant this variance, is that we don't care what the municipal ordinance says. That in this particular neighborhood, the house is forever and ever or at lo, as least as long as I'm going to be around, and maybe the rest of you as well, will be at 25 feet, not 40 feet. I can't subscribe to that theory. So unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm going to vote against this application. This variance being granted. I think when this house comes down, this is an opportunity to apply the municipal ordinance. And my guess is that over the years, other houses will be demolished as well. And the properties will be 40 feet back from the street where they should be. I don't think the house next door to the left, as you face this house, is to me, I think, it looks horrible. I think it would look much better if it were 40 feet back, not in line with the, the property that's in question here. In any event, that's my comment. Any other board members? Yes. Joy?
Okay. I, I actually disagree. I think 40 feet on the street of this scale is too far back. The reason I agree with you on the house to the left, that's a very wide house. And because of the width, it should be fur, I believe it should be in scale, it should be further back, but the lot, in this case, is very narrow. And I think that if it was put 40 foot back, I think it would not hold the street line. And traditional streets have, you need a certain amount of enclosure on street wall to actually have a street. I actually think that we have a bigger problem. And I'm not, it's not just specific to this project, but if you go through the town in general with our zoning, we have a tremendous problem in that we're getting these extremely thin, long houses, particularly in the Washington area, because I think our zoning ordinance, ordinance is actually pretty messed up in a lot of areas in that they, there is no limit on the length of a wall, a sidewall. This house that was presented tonight, I measured it, I forgot what it is, but I'm sure Daniel can say. It's pretty long. It does, he does attempt to, he does have a small pushback, and I know that's not what's in question here. But I, my opinion is that the zoning is not always right. And we should consider, I don't know how this goes about, but we should consider looking at a different type of zoning, a form-based zoning that would be more about the particular patterns and the forms that makes sense in the landscape. I think that going by the numbers, like something like 40 feet is just another example how it's really not appropriate to make a traditional street of that scale. But that's my opinion.
So I have a comment. That particular street had a lot of ranch houses on it, and particularly on that side of the street. And what has happened over time is that they have had second stories built on to add space for new families coming in. And I agree, I agree with Joy that it would really disturb the streetscape to have this house pushed back so far. And it would really be odd-looking, I think.
Is there a motion in the case?
One, one last quick thing, Eileen. You know, I'm looking here at the applicant, and it's some of this Jordan Carpenter and Rachel Mansfield. But then if you go to attachment F, it has E.Tai Harrell. So who actually owns this thing?
An error on my part is definitely Carpenter or Mansfield own it. E.Tai will be the builder. I'm not sure why.
Okay, so because the owner and fee on the zone calculation form is E.Tai Harrell.
Yeah, that's, that's a mistake. E.Tai's never owned it.
Okay. So as a quick comment, I, I kind of agree with everything that's been mentioned. This house is 50 feet deep. We had a house on the other side of the street that's 53 feet deep that we did not approve.
More than 50, by the way.
I'm sorry?
I think it's more than 50.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sort of around numbers. You know, it's close to 50 feet or more so deep. Which is not going to be that attractive at 25 foot depth from the front. I agree that with, with the points that were made and keeping that, that Mary made in keeping a streetscape somewhat consistent, but it's going to tower from the side over the house next to it. It's, I think that it's just going to be winding up somewhat of an eyesore. Let's say that I'm against the application, I just think that, that it does need to be visited and how we're, how these things are being constructed in this area. Because they, everything just looks, it looks like a locomotive. I mean, it's just so long and so narrow. And as mentioned, this house will, will definitely have a very similar cast over the street as the one next door to it. You're replacing, you know, one-story, one-and-a-half-story homes with large two-story dwellings that will definitely have a way different streetscape at 25 feet than it would at 40 feet. It would, this house, this house presents as it should be set back at 40 feet as opposed to the one that's sitting there now, which presents more to 25 feet because of the fact that it's only a one-and-a-half-story home. That's my story.
I'll ask again, is there a motion in this case?
I move approval of the application.
Second? Jody, are you seconding it?
I, I don't know whether she said yet.
I'll second it then.
Am I on mute? Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Craig Plentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
She's muted. Sorry, yes.
Joe Steinberg?
Application is approved. Okay.
I didn't, Joe, I didn't hear your vote.
We didn't get your vote.
You didn't hear it?
No.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, the last?
Mark?
39 Stewart is next.
Okay.
We have anyone here?
Yes, hold on, I have to bring everybody, I have to get them out and the other people over. I don't know. John, can you unmute? Who do I bring over?
You have to bring over Mark Don, he's their attorney.
Okay, and Rachel?
John James is their architect.
And Brian Hirsch.
And Richard Keller.
I don't see.
He's not testifying tonight.
Oh, okay.
Is he even here?
No, I guess he's not, but I saw him on the application. I just.
Yeah, okay.
So Brian Hirsch. One, two, three people.
One, two, three.
Property owner.
Rachel Wolf is here.
Yes.
Jerry, would you raise your right hand, please? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help you God, no matter no pending.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, who's your first witness?
So again, Mark Don of the Wolf Law Firm. I'm going to introduce Rachel Wolf, who is the manager of 39 Stewart Road LLC.
Thank you for your time tonight. So if you're familiar with the property and if you look at the plans, the house at 39 Stewart is set very far back from the street and there's really no backyard. And so, you know, we have three young children, the oldest is six years old, the rest are younger. And we plan on spending a lot of time in the front yard. So to that end, we are proposing a gate and a fence at the front of the house. And John James and Brian Hirsch can walk you through the plans and go over it with you in more detail.
Um, okay, I'll go ahead and start and.
Let's have your qualifications.
Okay, I'm a principal in a seven person architectural firm specializing in historic houses and properties. I have a bachelor of architecture from University of Virginia, a master of architecture from Columbia University, registered in New Jersey, New York and Connecticut, and had a practice in this area for 25 years. And presented before this board on numerous occasions and all my licenses are current.
Your qualifications as an architect are accepted by this board.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen and go over the drawings with you. So first I want to start off with 39 Stewart Road is a designated site. It's in the Short Hills Park Historic District. It was built in 1906 in a neoclassical style. It was originally the carriage house for 25 Stewart Road. And it's an adaptive reuse conversion of a stable to residence. And this project was previously reviewed by the HPC. And a letter of approval from the HPC dated 6/30/2020 from Allison Canfield was included in our application packet to all the board members. So the design we are reviewing with you has been submitted and has been previously approved for this historically designated site by the HPC pending your approval of the zoning implications. So since the house at 39 Stewart Road was originally built as a stable, it's really at the rear of the property. You can see Stewart Road here on the right hand side. And you can see the depth of the property. And here's the main house. This property is approximately 395 feet deep. And the front of the house is, is at approximately 300 feet. So the existing house is nonconforming and it actually sits in the rear yard setback of, of the property. Pretty much with its originally starting off as a stable for another much larger property in the area. But now that it's on its own lot of over an acre, it's so far back that it really renders the backyard unusable from a coverage and an activity point of view. And has this enormous front yard.
I would also like to point out, John, sorry to interrupt, that the backyard is incredibly steep going back down the slope there. So whatever is usable is there's about a 30 to 40 foot drop. About back in the house. So just keep that in mind as well.
Yes.
John, before you continue on, the survey you have in the screen share appears to be a different survey than what's included in our package. Because what I'm looking at in front of me is a land title and topographic survey. And let me see if I could read the date. Mr. Alonso Fama uses such tiny print. December 13, 2019 is the date. And the shading is a little different because it's showing me a steep topography on the left, and I'm not seeing that on, on your version of it. I have a problem with you, your testimony referring to that survey. But I think we're going to need to mark it as A1, and I'm going to need you to tell me the date of that survey.
Well, I can go back. It's a Casey and Keller survey as well. Let me just check my file here. And I can, let's see.
That's the one.
That's the one we have. That, I think that's more likely the one we have. No, because that's all showing landscaping. That's a different plan.
Just a second.
What's the date on the Casey and Keller survey that you have?
Yeah, because we can keep.
The date on the Casey and Keller survey that I have is, let me get your photographs out of the way. It's the existing survey.
Down by Mike's name, it's going to be really tiny print with his name.
Hold it down, just hold down a little.
6/6/2019.
What is it?
I read 6/6/2019.
60619.
Yeah, ours is dated 12/13/19.
Right, so we have a more current version, but that's fine. It's not a problem. Because the one we have will still be part of the application and part of the record. But what we're going to do is just mark this one as A1. The survey, the Casey and Keller survey dated June 6, 2019. And John, if you would just get a copy of that to Eileen tomorrow.
I can drop a copy of it off. And the one that you have in your packet shows the toning of the steep slopes that Jonathan was referring to through the far left.
Right, but I would rather you email if you have, if you have this in digital version, this one. If you just email it to Eileen tomorrow, she can email it to me as well.
You mean the existing one I'm showing without the contour?
Correct, correct.
I can, so that you'll have both of them.
Correct.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. And please continue.
So the house is set back very far from the street. And in addition, it has a three, a three car freestanding garage that was built later on, which is another nonconforming condition on the property. As Rachel said, they have security concerns on this house and are not going to be able to use the backyard and plan on using the front yard. So because of this, we are proposing to add gate posts with a pair of gates and an invisible deer fencing in the front yard and along the side yards to provide a protective enclosure for this property. And as such, we're going to need a variance from the zoning board for the gates and the fencing, both in the front yard and for the height of the gates and the fencing. Now, the owners purchased antique gates and gate posts. And they are in, shown on the drawings prepared by Brian Hirsch Landscape Architect. These are turn of the century gates from a similar period of when the house was built. It was built in 1906. And we're proposing on the site plan to set these gates here along the driveway 70 feet back from the front property line or 90 feet back from the center line of Stewart Road. And the reason for this is that it would be back beyond what a normal setback on this road would be so that the gates would be much more inobtrusive and would not have a presence on the road in and of itself. We also chose to use deer fencing because it would be the most invisible fence that we could do. And you can see the line of where we're proposing the fencing. There's already existing fencing along several of the backyards at front on Mini Sink Road at the top of the page. And we're just continuing that back around to the house. And then along the bottom of the page, we're going to be doing planting in association with the adjacent neighbor. And at this point, we'll be putting in the fence and doing the planting on our side of the fencing. That house is currently in construction. So it was deemed that we shouldn't do any of that landscaping until they near the completion of construction to allow all the plants to live. You can notice that we have double planting along the front of the lot. A lot of that's already been installed, so that the fencing will be completely concealed from the road and from any passersby. Our landscape architect, Brian Hirsch, prepared two renderings. And one of them shows you, this is a photograph of the property showing the screening on the right and the driveway going up. And you can see the house under construction on the left. And the second one superimposes the gate at 70 feet back from the property line, again showing the landscaping on the right and showing the additional landscaping that's going to be placed on the left. You'll notice there is some protective fencing now that you can see through the gates. That's going to be removed and replaced with the deer fence, so it will be totally invisible.
John, I saw, I saw a question come in and I feel like I can answer it if that's okay. There will be no deer fencing in the rear yard. So it, it ends, it terminates at the house, the front of the house.
The, so the fencing is going to be put in now with the gates. And the remainder of the landscaping on the neighbor's side will be put in after their construction commences. Brian Hirsch is here to answer any questions that anyone has and talk about the landscaping and the fencing. But he's done an extensive plan and parts of which have already been implemented from a landscape point of view. But we need your approval for gates, gate posts and the fencing itself. So if there are questions for Brian, I'd like to pause and let him talk for a minute. And then I'll summarize, or I can go ahead and summarize and we can wait to see if there are any questions from board members of the public.
I think that will, like, now, who is the gentleman you would like to speak next?
Brian Hirsch, the landscape architect.
Yes, I think that the board would be very interested in how the board can be certain that all that landscaping that we are looking at on your draw, on this photograph, I guess it's not, it's not a photograph of what exists today.
Well, here's today. And this is.
I was talking about that photograph.
Right.
I'd like, I know that there will be questions as to how the board can assure itself that that landscaping will in fact be put in.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Brian and let him continue, and then I'll summarize at the end.
Sure.
Brian?
Yes. Do you have to exit your screen, John, your share?
Yes.
Are there other things you want to show? Or I'll show these or yeah, why don't I, I exit and you can, you can, come on, perfect.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Hirsch, have you yet been sworn?
I have not, no. I mean, I swore in when we first started the meeting.
Mr. Fishman, let's swear the witness.
Raise your right hand, sir, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So help you God, no matter no pending.
I do.
Thank you.
Let's, let's get your qualifications, please.
Sure, so I'm a landscape architect. I graduated with a BSLA from Cornell University in 2001. I worked in New York City, licenses currently in three states, New York, New Jersey and Connecticut. They're all in good standing and I own a small firm that I started in 2008. And we specialize in primarily residential landscapes in those three states.
And where is your?
My firm, my, my home office is in New York City, but my office office is in Clifton, New Jersey.
Your qualifications as a landscape architect are accepted by this board.
Thank you. So to address your questions about the landscaping, just to give you a current status, we started a lot of the planting around this property in the spring planting season. So I don't have an exact count, but we've probably planted about 50% of the material that is currently shown on the planting plan that John was referring to. And I'll bring that up here. I just wanted to paint in broad strokes as we're, we're looking at this. And forgive me, this is my first video that I've done this way, so sharing and everything else might be a little bit slower than the other proficient individuals here. Are you guys seeing what I'm seeing?
We're seeing small thumbnails of several photographs and three PD, three documents identified as PDF documents.
Okay, so you're not currently seeing?
No, if you want us to see one of those documents, you have to click on it.
Yeah, because it's on my screen right now, Etai.
Try sharing that application instead of sharing your whole, your desktop.
Okay. You know what, John, it might be better if you do that. I'm sorry to say this. I don't want to give up so easily here.
Brian, which, which?
I was going, referring to the, the planting plan, if you could.
I can go back to.
I apologize, guys.
You're going to have to stop sharing.
You have to stop sharing, Brian.
Yep, no problem. That first one.
Here's the planting plan.
Is, can you rotate that 90 degrees?
I can.
Okay, the other way, of course, yep.
And Mr. Hirsch, if you can tell us the date of that planting plan?
It is August 4th, 2020.
Thank you.
Okay, so starting from the lower right hand corner, you can see those six large trees have been installed, one, two, three, four, five, six. On the cryptomaria, which is directly next to that, which is the evergreen to the left, John, sorry. Yep, right there. That one has been installed. Then continuing to the left, there's another cryptomaria, correct, right there. And those are shown in the existing photograph. If you flip to number three. So that last tree is that cryptomaria tree right there. And that's about a 20 foot tall, 12 foot wide tree. And that's about a twenty foot tall, twelve foot wide tree. And then if you scroll back down again, if you go to the left side of where the proposed gate is. Yes, so there's five trees in a row, one, two, three, four, five. If you refer back to the screen, number three. Those trees you can see behind the, just behind the neighbor's fence, just so you understand, the construction fence you're seeing was actually the. Asbestos abatement fence for the next door neighbor's construction at twenty five Stewart, not for anything that's going on on thirty nine Stewart. So that fence will disappear, it's right now also serving as a tree protection fence, so it's serving, you know, dual purposes. So that is the extent of what has been planted on the plan currently. If you go to the rendering for a second, the bottom one. So what the plantings hope to achieve in the foreground is there's a large Norway spruce, which is shown to the left of the driveway. Which is going to be a twenty four to a twenty six foot tall tree, which is about fourteen to sixteen feet in diameter. And the purpose there, I think, shown to scale is to be able to, one, not have a driveway confusion upon which driveway you're accessing and which house you're going to. And to provide much more privacy and setback visually for the gate from the road. And then the trees behind that are again smaller trees, so if you go to the plan. John, I can show you in the front, that first large tree to the left of the driveway is the spruce. Then you have a grouping of the three smaller evergreens. And the last two trees behind it are actually matching the existing tree, which is a western red cedar. Which exists already on site and is the one towering tree that's in picture number three, if you refer to that. So that large existing tree is a western red cedar, and so we're, it's done very well, you know, for a number of years, so we're planting and augmenting that below that. So the only reason we haven't planted those already, and I think John, James covered this, is that the driveway next door is currently being installed. They were doing some. Both utility and trenching work for, you know, sewer, gas, electric, water. That work is gonna be concluding shortly and we're getting into the heart of fall planting. So those plants will be installed, I would say, within the next three to six weeks, just depending on the weather.
Are all those plantings on the applicant's property?
I, no, that's a good question, so the, the applicant has been working with the owner of twenty five Stewart. And there's been, the driveways are very closely intertwined. And as John referred to, this property was the stable for that house at twenty five Stewart. So their proximity was that they were used as a single property at one point. So part about what we're doing is obviously working in a neighborly way to create privacy for both people. And planting trees where they're advantageous to both sides of the fence, so to speak. So if you, we could go down the list of it, the only ones that are not on thirty nine Stewart's property. Are the ones that are between the two driveways where the land is very thin between them, there, there's as little as ten to twelve feet in some point. Between the two driveways, so it's kind of like a long peninsula between two paved roadways.
So the Norway. The Norway spruce and some of those trees behind the Norway spruce are, would be planted on the neighbor's property.
Correct, um, if you scroll in a little bit closer, John, I think it shows the property line. In better detail. So if you see there. Yes, that is the property line, which you can see the driveway, there's a portion of the driveway, which is, you know, already existing to be over. By about, you know, a foot or two, but the planting. You know, is a share, it's between the two driveways, so we're basically creating an evergreen buffer. In the median between the two driveways. And we've been working with the neighbor to approve species and, you know, just to make sure that everybody's happy with what's going on and. I mean, I know it's hearsay, but I would say that the neighbor has been very pleased with the privacy that they're gaining.
Mr. Hirsch, as I did Mr. James, we've marked this planting plan as A two. And I would ask you to email the digital version of that to Ms. David tomorrow and then she'll share it with me.
Does this plan differ in date from the one that you guys had or was?
We don't have the planting plan, we just have the entrance gate plan.
Okay, all right, no, no problem.
The entrance gate plan is part of the application, but this plan was marked as an exhibit because it was used during your testimony.
Okay, understood.
If you would just send the digital version of this to Eileen tomorrow, then she can share it with me as well.
No problem. I'm happy to speak about the gates that I'm showing in the drawing too, if there are any questions about them. I, I'm happy to prove that any more background, I mean, the planting. On the rest of the property, there is significant amount of planting that's happened towards the rear of the property. But that affects more between the two properties than it does the view from the road from the street side.
Well, Mr. Hirsch, I have a question because I think on your gate plan, which is the plan submitted. With the applications we receive, sheet D three. It talks about this deer fencing, hex mesh deer fencing, and I just wanna confirm. You're talking about a height of six feet, six inches, correct?
Correct.
And it's invisible?
So the, it's a yes, it's a black coated hex mesh, the openings are about an inch and a quarter. And it's a very thin gauge metal that has a plastic PVC on top of it. It's not a square box wire, which for whatever reason, vertical and horizontal lines are very visible in the landscape. Whereas these are all made of thirty, sixty, nineties, which disappear into the branching. So there, and just so you understand, the posts on these also are about twenty feet apart. So the only thing that you can see on this are the posts, the posts are inch and a half, again, black PVC coated. Stainless steel, and so those are, it is all but invisible once you put plantings in front of it. I've actually anecdotally had a neighbor walk into the fence not knowing that it was there, that's how invisible it can be. And the six foot six height, it comes in seven foot rolls. And you usually leave the last six inches like to bend with the land as it goes and it's staked down. And that's just to prohibit the deer from coming in, so the height, it's not an exact six foot six. But I'm trying to give you the best, you know, rule.
Approximately. Approximately, a height of approximately six foot six.
So Eileen, when you're looking for the variances, we're asking for eight feet for the gate posts. We're asking for approximately seven feet for the gates themselves and six foot six inches for the deer fencing.
I have a question?
Go ahead, Steve.
So could you please talk to us about the neighbors that have comparable gates? And comparable fencing?
Sure, um, so, you know, deer fencing is used in short hills, as you know, to protect. Plant material, especially during winter time browsing. One of the reasons why I think that this is important is that we are talking about having recreational space in the front yard. And, you know, what we've noticed on this property is that privacy has, has been limited. So you have people coming in from the road, especially with these deep set driveways, because people love to come in and look and they're beautiful properties to get vantage points of. And I think there's a legitimate security concern, both with having children playing the front, especially now with COVID. You have people coming onto the property that aren't necessarily welcome there. And the properties tend to be so deep set.
I'm sorry, I asked about neighbors that had comparable gates?
I'm sorry, so I, if you drive throughout the historic area, there are old pillars and old gates that have been set up. I don't have addresses, but that's something that I could look up. And they range in height and width from three by three to eight foot to larger than that. Some of the newer ones tend to be smaller in scale. And the deer fence, you know, can run sometimes the entire property all the way to the front that are concealed with plantings. And sometimes they're limited just to the rear yard or just the front yard, so there's numerous examples.
But there are no houses on that street that have comparable gates, right?
There's one, two doors down, so if you're going down and to the right, I don't know the address, but there's deer fencing that's directly there. And of course, the most recent example is on the corner of Highland and on Western. There was recently, you know, wrought iron fence that was put in, which is. You know, there's the piers themselves are stone piers that are thirty by thirty by eight feet tall and there's probably sixteen or twenty of them in a row.
Yeah, on Highland Avenue as well as along. Western. We have gates and gate posts at sixty six Mini Sink as well on the curve. There are other gate posts on Western and gates there as well.
And just up the road on Stewart, if you continue along Stewart, there's the old, you know, estate that's on the left hand side there, which those are enormous. But that was part of a different time period.
Right, I mean, a lot of these day gates, you know, could potentially predate the ordinance, right?
I, well, the, two of the three examples we just talked about, which are down on, the ones on Western Highland and the one that is on. On Minas Inc., I'm sorry, on Stewart, just further down, those two are very recent, within the last year or two. One, it was installed this spring.
You have much larger gate posts at the corner of Hartshorn and Parson Attila Road. On both Parson Attila Road and along Hart, Hartshorn Drive.
Yeah, but gate posts are not the same as a gate, it's different, right?
Excuse me?
I mean, when you have, I know that there's a lot of gate posts. But not necessarily gates.
All of the ones we're talking about have gates as well.
Okay, thank you.
John, I'm not sure if anybody else is looking at this plan, you might wanna end the sheet, screen share.
Okay.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hirsch?
I have a question, is there a sample of the deer fencing, do you, is there something we can see?
So let me try to do my file share again, I took some pictures on the job site. And it has an existing fence in there.
Is it flexible?
It is flexible, it's not high tensile, so if you can, if a branch falls on it, it can accordion down. And then you can pull it back up again and it re, it retains its form. It's, it's, it's a, I mean, I hate to call it chicken wire, but that's what it resembles in terms of the, of the actual like hex mesh itself. And the only reason why you powder coated it, you know, in the, in the black vinyl is to make it disappear more, so it doesn't have a metallic hue to it. And black tends to disappear the most into the landscape, let me see if I can find a. Are you guys seeing the same thing I'm seeing or no, again?
You're, you're sharing your desktop, you need to share the actual application or share your whole screen, you can't just share that one window.
Where is the option for doing that?
When you hit share, it should give you an option as to what you're choosing to share typically.
Click on screen sharing, Brian, and then try to click on the exact image on your desktop.
Nothing like someone who is young, not understanding technology, I'm sorry.
If you quickly email the file to John, I'm sure he can share it as well.
I'm doing that right now, John.
Jonathan, I think we swore wait Rachel in, but I don't think we swore you in, did we?
I held my hand up at the same time, but I'm willing to do it again if you would like.
Phil, why don't you just swear Jonathan Wolf in?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God, no matter now, pending.
Yes.
Thank you, that way I could just, cuz I know you've commented a couple of times, I just wanna be able to have the record clear.
No problem.
All right, John, I'm sorry for the delay, they've gone over to you, if you can. Those and share them, they're pictures from the, from the street that I took just yesterday. But the reason why I shot them was to show how invisible the fence was, so I don't think it's gonna help answer your question about what it actually looks like. Cuz usually I take the pictures to show that it looks invisible.
You have a close up or a sample anywhere, Brian?
I'm gonna look right now.
If any other, does anyone have any questions for us while we're waiting, trying, just trying not to have the stale time?
Well, I have a basic question. Comes all the way back to the question I asked thirty minutes ago. Whose property are these trees on that are gonna block the view of this new fence from the street? And. My follow up question would be, I think that somebody's said earlier. That there's a cooperation now between the property owner and the property owner. Who owns, the person who owns the property to the left. As you face this house and the proposed fence. But, you know. Cooperation can last just so long until the first fight and then cooperation ends. And does that mean that these trees never get planted?
So, I guess, I mean, just to elaborate on our relationship with the neighbors here, because they are, there is a relationship, I know it's hearsay. But as an example, there is a retaining wall that they need to build on their side of the property for their garage. And they've requested if we take down trees on our property. So that, because they're gonna probably kill them when they put their retaining wall in and they volunteered to take down the trees for us. You know, that was no problem, we said that script, you know, as long as you do it in the right trades, no problem, that's happening next week. You know, so that's, you know, that's, that is happening. We've already planted trees on slightly their side of or right on the property line that they.
Mutually agreed upon.
We, you know, they're, the, 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 the wife of the couple, she's a historic landscape, historic architect. And she would not let us plant anything that wasn't exactly right for the property. And they've been thrilled with what we planted so far, again, I know it's hearsay, but i- in terms of assurances it's gonna get planted. You know, we are willing to stipulate that these get planted, you know, before we put the gates in, if that's what, if that's what needs to happen. Because we are very confident that the neighbors are gonna be cooperative and like Brian and John alluded to. If it wasn't for utility work, that was supposed to have happened months ago, but due to the storm. The electric company never put a new pole in time, we would have already had the trees in. That's the only reason why it hasn't happened yet.
You've made some good suggestions as to how we can be sure that the trees will go in. They go in first and then the gate.
It's fine, fine by us.
Okay, I have the photographs here.
And then I, John, I also sent you a picture of the exact fence, I found. And then, John, I also sent you a picture of the exact fence, I found three existing samples.
Is that coming in a separate email?
Yes.
Okay. So, do you want to go through these first, and then I'll go download that, Brian?
Yeah, thank you, John.
So, here the, here the, this, this first photograph you want to describe it, Brian?
Yep, so, when we're talking about the existing plantings that I was showing before, and I was saying, six trees are put in the front, these are examples of six magnolia, evergreen magnolia trees that are about eighteen to twenty feet tall, you can see the overhead wires, those are way up at thirty-plus feet, but you can see how these are located behind that, and then we have planted the understory shrubs beneath it to get some of the privacy that the deer are not going to bother out front, so you can see the size of the tree all the way to the left, which is the cryptum area, which is obviously much taller than the eighteen to twenty footers, and these are basically the size range we're trying to put in to give an irregular planting as opposed to a hedge or like a screening feel to it, we'd like it to be in keeping with the character of the plantings you see up and down the street on either side, and if you look beyond where my car is parked, you can see the existing plantings as a wall, you can go through, John, there, so, what you're not seeing here, and what I wanted to, the reason I was using these photographs is behind these magnolias, there is a sample of the deer fence, which is at the corner, so, I mean, it's, what I was trying to do was show how you can't see it, so that was part of what these photographs were going to show, but the ones that John is opening next show the fence up against, you know, a completely blank surface. The, the green fence that you're seeing in the front is a traditional four-foot, you know, plastic, open-style fence, snow fence, what you want to call it, and you can see how close the posts are together, that's about six feet on center, and that's about a four-and-a-half foot tall fence at this point, what we're talking about is the posts are about twenty feet, so you'd only have about three posts going between the pole to the corner. And again, just, this shows the existing plantings that have been installed as recently as a few days ago. Were you able to open up that next email, John?
Yeah, let me go get it.
Any other questions for either Mr. Hirsch or Mr. James? Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions for any of the witnesses in this case? Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this matter? Eileen, is there anyone there?
Yes, there is, but Mr. James, have you been able to find those pictures?
Yes, I'm getting them right now.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Hirsch, you've learned your letter, your lesson, the next time you testify, you'll bring a ten-year-old.
Yeah, I need a, I need my daughter here, she's five and a half, she knows how to do this.
That's frightening, but true.
Okay, here are the pictures, here's one showing deer fencing here.
You need to share your screen, John.
Thanks, again. Too many things open. Okay, can you see this now?
I can see a post.
There's a post, there's another post, and you can see, this is the line of the deer fencing, perhaps, you can see it barely in front of the pool, let me just...
You can see it in front of the pool.
You can see it, yeah.
Yeah.
That's with a white background and with no plantings on both sides.
And here's another detail as well.
And so, these pictures were taken specifically when you have a very blank or light background, so you can actually see the fence, because people often ask what it looks like, and the whole point of these photographs is to show, you know, what it looks like unless it's up against a white, you know, object, and obviously, once you plant these, and you plant trunks or bay-shaped planters in front of the poles and the posts, those disappear quite nicely.
Well, it's kind of, you can see it here in the bright part, and when you see it against the dents of the trees, it totally disappears.
Yeah, so I think this picture particularly, John, not that, not this picture, but the one you just were at, maybe we should mark this one as A3, and you could shoot that to Eileen.
This one right here?
Yeah, because I think it showed, you can see the fence, you can also see how it blends in.
We'll send that one.
Thank you.
Okay, should I then just go ahead with our summary?
Yes.
I think you can stop screen sharing, and we have, where you summarized, we have a person that has a statement they want to make, so. Melanie Rosenbaum, you'll have to be sworn in.
Okay.
Melanie, could you raise your volume too, and Phil, if you would swear in? Melanie, unfortunately, you need to share video, because in order to testify, we need to see you as well as hear you.
Okay, I'm in my P.
There we go, Phil.
Raise your right hand, please, do you square to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it, in the matter now pending?
Yes.
Thank you.
We need your address, Melanie, for the record.
Eighteen Moraine Place.
Eighteen what?
Moraine, M-O-R-A-I-N-E.
Alright, speak up.
Okay, so, my backyard connects with their backyard, and I just want to say, I love it, I think it's beautiful, totally suits the neighborhood, so thank you very much for doing that. Good night.
Good night.
Anybody else in the audience want to be heard?
Anyone else, Eileen?
I don't see anyone else, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any more testimony from the applicant?
Yes, I just wanted to make a quick summary, we have an existing non-conforming location of the house at thirty-nine Stewart, at the very rear of the property, it's already located within the rear yard setback, and leaves very minimal opportunities for using the backyard because of the setback, and because of the steep slopes that are along the back of the property, we purchased turn-of-the-century gates to put in an obtrusive location, set almost double the setback from the minimal property line setbacks required in this zone, we're further doing an extensive landscaping plan with very mature trees and understory plantings to conceal the fencing that will be in the front yard. We are also coordinating with the neighbor to make sure that all these plantings are going to be planted, to give a private entry to both the gates, and you can see from the photographs that the fencing that we're proposing is probably the most minimal intervention that we can think of in terms of this location, and nestled among the new trees and the plantings, we don't think that it causes a detriment to the public good, or a substantial impairment of the purpose of the zoning plan and the ordinance, and improvements are really consistent with the established character of the neighborhood, our application conforms to all other requirements for the Milburn zoning ordinance, except it's what we have noted, and the Historic Preservation Commission has already reviewed and approved this proposal, and issued a certificate of appropriateness on June thirtieth, twenty twenty, for these reasons, and based on the drawings and the testimony submitted, we're respectfully asking for your approval of the proposed variances for the gates and the fence, thank you very much.
Thank you, I will ask one more time if there's anyone in the audience who has a comment or a question, speak up now, please. I see and hear none, board members, what are your thoughts?
These gates automated?
Pardon me?
These gates automated? Yes, they will be automated.
Yes.
I'll go.
Steve?
Um, you know, candidly, I just, I know that deer, they're a problem everywhere in town, I mean, I'm, I'm on the south side of the train tracks and the cheap seats, and we get deer in the front yard all the time, deer are definitely a problem, there's no doubt about that, but candidly, I just haven't heard anything compelling to justify a front yard fence and a gate, I, I, I just haven't heard any evidence that this is really required, it's just an issue we all deal with, and it's why the ordinance are written the way they're written, so I'm, I just, I'm not in support of this application.
Anyone else on the board?
I think we did hear, you know, some testimony that the house is set so far back that, you know, they, they, they don't have much use of their backyard, so uncomfortable with the testimony given, I actually like the look of the, the gate, I, I love that they found a, you know, historically accurate gate to put in that location that, you know, suits the style of the house, I like that the gate is set back, so it's not, you know, immediately apparent, you know, as soon as you pull into the driveway, and I think that the fence is going to blend in with the landscaping, I don't think that it's going to be an eyesore, so I could support this application.
Anyone else?
I'll put my two cents in again, this is a very important historic property, and I really want to commend the Wilfs for doing a wonderful job in preserving this piece of history for our community, I think that the, the gate is very proper with the history of the house, and they have, they have obviously an issue with the backyard not being available, and, and children playing in the front, I think the deer fence being all but invisible and being flexible is the best answer for a fence in the front yard, side yard area of that house, so I would be willing to support the application.
Anyone else? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Is the motion subject to any conditions?
Oh, well, Craig, you go.
I would say, as the planting plan as, as presented, is basically what I would say.
Planting plan prior to the issuance of a C, of a building permit for the, the gates, and, okay.
So wait, the condition is that the, the planting plan...
The planting has to be completed, according to the planting plan, prior to the issuance of a permit, I don't know, I'm having trouble speaking here, permit for the gate, gate posts and fencing.
Okay. Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Frank Plentner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Louis Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
No.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Eileen, who was the second?
It was Jessica.
Thank you.
Well, I think that that terminates the... Is there any new business that is not on the agenda?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Right, is there a motion to...
Wait.
Don't do anything yet, let me just get them off here.
Okay, now, I think everyone is aware that we're now going to a relatively brief executive session.
Right, but after the executive session, we need at least four members to come back into this meeting to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, here's my only concern, and Nicole, maybe you could, I don't know if I, once I terminate this meeting, if I can get back in this meeting.
Why, why can't we terminate this meeting now?
Because we can't, we technically aren't supposed to adjourn from the closed session, you're supposed to come back into the, I mean, I know sometimes township committee does, but really, you're supposed to come back into the public session to adjourn, Nicole, do you know what would happen if, if, well, I, so, I don't know, can we leave the meeting open, and...
I'm pretty sure this meeting will close out, don't you remember Alex did that to us in the middle of the meeting once?
No, I have, he set up a different meeting, we have a meeting set up, so a meeting and a webinar can run at the same time, he set it up separately, that's why he set it up, so we won't get, my question is, if we, if I close out of this meeting, to go into closed session, can I get back into this meeting, can I open it back up, I don't know if I can.
I don't know, I guess...
I guess we'll try.
Adjournment right now, and I'll hang out, and if you lose me and I'm gone, then you'll know we adjourned.
Why can't we just stay here now, why do we have to close this?
No, we have, because...
Because we're, it's, it's...
The public, the public... Being recorded. For us.
Being recorded, unless I turn off, but video is still...
Administrator.
Right, so Nicole, you have to hang out in this, you have to hang out in the meeting, of us will leave.
So everyone has the information to sign, this is just going to be a meeting, so you're all just going to pop up, you don't have to be brought over as a panelist, it's a meeting, not a webinar, so...
Pop up automatically?
You'll come on, you'll come in automatically.
Yeah, but you're going to go to the email, Joe, you're going to go to the link for the closed session and, and log in.
You don't need me any longer, right?
No.
Right.
Okay, how do I get out of this?
Just say leave, hit leave, down at the bottom of the screen on the right, a red button, it says leave.
It usually has a red button, oh.
Just, we'll say end, which is, I guess, what I'm going to press.
Okay, can we leave this window open, Nicole, can we leave this window open?
No, Nicole is...
You can try.
I'm still here, so, usually there is an end button here, but it isn't here.
It should say leave.
Leave, it says leave.
Way at the bottom.
Hit the movie cursor over, it's on the bottom right.
Yeah, but, but I'm just thinking, if we don't leave this meeting and go to the other meeting, just go on mute on this meeting.
Yeah, but it's not us that we want to mute, we don't want the public to be able, you know, to do anything.
You can't, you can't open two Zoom meetings, it won't allow you to do it.
It won't allow you to do it, even if one is...
No, you have to terminate this one, and go to the link that was sent.
We have to leave it, yeah.
Right, that's why Nicole has to stay.
Saying we will...
Everyone else should just leave, except for Nicole.
Right. I'll just stay and look at myself for a little...
That way we'll be able to get back in. Alright.
We'll have to go to your email and click on the link for the closed session, see you over there, don't forget about me.
Wait, can I press end, if I press end, I'm going to end the meeting, it doesn't...
Press end.
Wait, I don't want to be a co-host right now, I'll take me out of co-hosts. More. Can I make you the host, I don't know how to do this, because if I...
Well, then...
Here, here, here.
If, can't you just lock?
I'm making you the host, I want to change you to the host, yes, so now I'm going to, now you're the host, I'm going to leave. I'm making you the host. I want to change you to the host, yes. So now I'm going to, now you're the host. I'm going to leave.
And I'll just stay. Okay. Okay.
I'm back. You're, you're, what do you call it? You're muted.
We should start bringing everybody over now?
Yeah. How many we have? One, two, three, four, five, let's do this!
Excellent! Who was that, Steve?
That was Steve.
And second was Craig?
Yeah, done.
One favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye!
Thank you, bye.
Thank you. That worked.
It worked.
Yay.